It is past the ten o'clock hour. It is Tuesday, October twenty fifth, two thousand twenty-two. The Board of Supervisors of the County of Del Norte and the governing body of all other special assessment and taxing districts for which said board so acts is now meeting in regular session. Only those items that indicate a specific time will be heard at the assigned time. All other items may be taken out of sequence to accommodate the public and staff availability. Kylie, would you please take role?
Supervisor Howard?
Here.
Supervisor Starkey?
Here.
Supervisor Short?
Here.
Supervisor Mastin?
Here.
Chair Hemmingson?
Here. Now, we're going to please take a moment of reflection. And now, if you'll all please stand, Supervisor Starkey will lead us into Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Introduction of new employees. None? Okay. County Council, any actions from closed session?
Nothing today, Chair.
Thank you. At this time, I would request any deletions, corrections, or additions from board members to the agenda. In order to add an item to the agenda, the matter must have come to the attention of the county subsequent to the posting of the agenda, and the matter requires action before the next regular session, regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors. Are there any such items? Okay, see none. We are now going to receive brief reports or announcements from supervisors on projects two-by-twos, things like that. We're going to start with Supervisor Mastin.
So I have held several meetings regarding the closure of Juvenile Hall, and amongst them included was with Paul Dillard with the Juvenile Justice Commission, so held a meeting with Judge McElfrish, Judge, Uroch Tribe Judge Bowers, Public Defense Attorney Ellie Hoops, District Attorney Katie Mix, and probation Lonnie Raymond, to talk about, and Supervisor Starkey was with us, to talk about their thoughts on the closure of the Juvenile Hall and also on what alternatives or programs or services that we might be providing to youth in our area, and for us to look at thinking outside the box and being creative and looking at creating something that could be a model for the state of California. Met with Amy Jester and Holly Hensher with Humboldt Area Foundation regarding the California State Public Defenders Report about the results and the recommendations of that report. I met with Reverend Dana Hall and Uroch Tribal Council Ryan Ray to discuss possible usages of the United Methodist Church in Klamath. Attended the Last Chance Grade Tour and Mitigation Solutions for the Species of Trees That Will Be Lost. Was very informative. It was great to see the alternatives and where each of those would occur. I really enjoyed that part of the tour because I had, I couldn't visualize where the tunnel was going to be or where the road was going to be moved, and so that was very helpful, and to hear the discussions and recommendations for mitigation solutions. Attended the School District Board meeting at Marguerite Keating School. It was great to hear the parents and teachers regarding the recommendations and challenges and the busing issues for busing children from Klamath to Crescent City. There was a lot of discussion about some mishaps that have occurred in those challenges and making sure that those would be fixed. And attended a planning session for the homeless with staff including DHHS, Planning and Code Enforcement, the Sheriff, County Council, and Administration, and you'll hear more about that in Action Item Number Thirty-four. Met with Daphne from Mission Impossible to talk, just to update her on that meeting and to take a quick tour about the area that we will be discussing. Attended the LAFCO meeting where we reviewed the status reports on the fire districts, and I had specific concerns with the low volunteer numbers for the Klamath Fire District and look forward to having further discussions on how we help to remedy that. Attended the Redwood Coast Transit Meeting and where we got an update on the progress from recovery for fares since COVID, and we learned that they're slightly lower than what we had heard previously, but that the trend is looking like fares are increasing and they believe that that's due to weather. We're looking at conducting a study to see what the demands might be to provide busing services for medical services in Southern Oregon, so that study will be unconducted to see if that is something that we want to be able to provide. And lastly, attended a United Indian Health Services Retreat for Board Training and Strategic Planning. And that concludes, thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Starkey?
Hi, thank you. I'm going to go fast, like I always talk fast. I attended a first five meeting where we appointed Renell Brown as one of our newest board members, and so we're excited to have Renell. We talked about modifications to the parent information form, and that's the data that we gather in order to determine what services are better, would be better utilized for our zero-to-five age group. And we received a presentation from the United Indian Health Services with regard to their native tobacco project, and it's a project to help quit smoking. I did take a tour of the Last Chance Grade. I was there for the morning session. Supervisor Hemmingson showed up for the afternoon session, and so we have a rule that only two supervisors can be in one place like that at the same time, so I went ahead and left. But I was there in the morning to go on the tour to see the different routes that are possibly going to be utilized, so either Route F, which is the tunnel, or X, which is cutting more into the existing area. I attended a Uroch Tribal Two-by-Two, and that was, we discussed mitigation on ways in which we can accomplish putting the Hunter Creek Bridge in, and that was a very interesting conversation, and I just want to give a huge shout-out to Roseanna Bauer. She was very prepared and very thorough with her presentation. Through that, we also discussed some of the transfer station ideas for the Klamath area on how we can maybe keep that open a little longer, so we'll work with solid ways to see if we can't come up with some agreement. I participated in the Visitor Bureau's workshop, and we broke down what our visions are, what our goals are, and staying focused on what we've already accomplished but expanding that vision so that we can create some more shoulder-season events that would bring tourists to Del Norte County to spend their nice dollars. I attended the Indigo Projects Meeting, both the community meeting and the strategic planning session, and that is our Crisis Mobile Unit, where we are coming up with ways in which we can reimagine the way that we respond to mental health crises in the field. So we're just getting through that. The mobile unit is a grant that we received, and we're working through that. I met with employees at the Redwood Parks Conservatory, and they have a youth protecting redwoods program that they'd like to get launched, and they have visions for a transportation hub right down on Front Street, and so I'm really excited about both of their visions, and I'm going to work with them to do that. I attended a city council meeting. My favorite thing that I did the last couple of weeks is I participated in an older Americans discussion, and I've been pushing a lot to make sure we get more services up here in Del Norte County for our older Americans, and they've heard us, right? So now they've got a social services coordinator position right here that's going to be stationed here in Del Norte County, so we need to get people to apply for that, and that'll help coordinate the services throughout. We are looking also for a volunteer trainer to keep, to help the elderly learn technology so that we can somehow reduce the digital divide. So I'm kind of looking over at IT right now to see if maybe they have some volunteer hours they want to do. But through this discussion, RCTA Joe Rye was there, and he was really happy to participate in this because he wants to adjust his transportation to meet the needs of the elderly. So for, you know, doctors' visits that are in Eureka, Humboldt area, how can we accommodate that? Social Services Crystal Nelson and Lenora Wallace, they agreed to keep this conversation going. So it was just, it was a very robust and encouraging conversation that we are going to make sure that we are coming up with services and solutions for our elderly. And I didn't make eye contact with any of you in the audience. I am not talking about you. Attended the Solid Waste Management Authority Meeting, a big announcement. I'm so excited about this. On November twelfth will be our Large Dump Day. That is the Clean California event that we have, so you can bring up to nine tires, you can bring your appliances and bulky items. They can be dumped for free. It's nine to one o'clock at the transfer station. If you're in line by one o'clock, they will do everything they can to get you in. There is a limit of only nine tires. If you have mattresses, they're going to ask that you bring that to a different location. So you can contact me if you want more information about that. We also have a marine boat flare event on November fifth, so if you need to dispose of your expired flares, there is the day that we can safely do that. I toured Animal Services. I like to try and check in there once a week or so, and we were just delivered ten of the brand-new kennels that we purchased with the Measure R dollars. These kennels are solid. They are such good quality. So we are still working with L&amp;L to get some concrete removed so that when that concrete is removed, we have a place to put these really strong kennels. So excited about that. I met with the South Bank neighbors, and we kind of talked about some of their frustrations when it comes to the Airbnbs and the noise. I think the last time we had the discussion, my focus was on the numbers, and did the numbers make sense? What I didn't consider at that meeting was the impacts that it has on the neighbors. So I'm actually going to be hoping that we can get some maybe board consensus this morning about maybe directing staff to begin looking into some of the solutions that could accommodate both the neighbors and the homeowners. I'm not into, I don't want to take away the property rights of the vacation rentals by any stretch, but at the same time, I'm looking, I'm hoping that we can look into some ways to mitigate the impact that these vacation rentals have on the neighbors. So do we have some consensus to direct staff to look into something like that?
Yeah, yeah, I see no reason why not. I'd like to, I'd like Community Development to have some input back to us on what they think needs to happen, as well as code enforcement. I'm good with it.
Okay, thank you. I participated in multiple Juvenile Hall discussions. That probably took up probably forty hours of my time in the last two weeks, which is totally fine, but I met with parents and attorneys and judges and prior employees and almost every member of the JJC, foster parents. I talked with the BSCC, and anybody that wanted to talk about Juvenile Hall closure, I talked to. I had a lot of discussions with the public defenders about the upcoming presentation that we'll see today and what that might look like for them. I attended several of the Tobacco Coalition Smoke-Free Housing Discussions, and then had an internal discussion to see if we brought an ordinance forward, how that might impact those around us. And then I also participated in some discussions, and this is exciting, with about a Proposition Sixty-four, and it's exciting for us that we have some really talented grant writers here in this community, Kevin Malone and Allison Ramsey, and it's about grant funding that could help support some community-based juvenile intervention and prevention services. So looking forward to where that goes. And then my final thing is just a reminder that we are having a tsunami exercise on Thursday and at ten AM, so if you would like, just to be aware, I think that the siren's going to go off, so be aware of that. But if you want to join OES over at the Rec Gym for Shelter Gathering, they're going to have some snacks and activities, and they'll present some preparedness information for you.
Thank you. I didn't think the siren was going to go off.
Yeah, I wasn't sure.
Supervisor Short?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Since our last meeting, I attended the North Coast AMS Medical Advisor Committee meeting, did agenda review for Solid Waste Management Authority, and then, of course, subsequent to that, we had the meeting. I was going to talk about the marine flare event, the large item cleanup, but Supervisor Starkey took care of that. Thank you very much. I spoke with Judge Karen Dixon over in Siskiyou County about their closure of Juvenile Hall and the effects that it had on their youth and the challenges or advantages that they experienced with their closure back in two thousand fourteen. I also spoke with Judge McElfrish about the hall as well and our item on today's agenda about our public defenders. I listened in to the city council meeting. I also met with the Redwood Parks Conservancy, as did Supervisor Mastin and Starkey, and talked about their new workforce that they're going to be working with that's grant-funded. Met with Assembly Member Wood, staff from the Smart Workforce Center, and staff from Charter Spectrum with Supervisor Hemmingson. We talked about funding for broadband and the hurdles that are necessary for building broadband infrastructure for that last mile, those unserved and underserved folks. And we toured the charter facility and learned how that infrastructure works, mostly on a very superficial level. At the end of the tour of that facility, we went to the Smart Workforce Center and toured their facility and learned what they do as well, and got to see Charter present them with three laptops and a four-thousand-dollar grant to help them with their mission of helping folks getting into good-paying jobs. I attended the gender review for this meeting. Also attended our LAFCO meeting yesterday where we adopted the Municipal Services Review in Spear of Influence for the fire districts in the county, and also yesterday, we had a Red Coast Transit Authority meeting where, like Supervisor Starkey was, I'm sorry, Supervisor Mastin was talking about, we approved a planning study for the need for medical transport services to the Medford area and to Humboldt County to serve those with medical transportation needs for those areas, and that's all for me.
Thank you. Supervisor Howard?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I attended a Lake Earl Wildlife Area Discussion that was presented by the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. Supervisor Hemmingson was there along with county staff. Probably a long overdue discussion about management of the wildlife area that's been in flux for as long as I've lived here. The interesting piece is that these conversations were really around trail maintenance, weed control, and more importantly, some closures around traditional hunting areas and those closures occurring during the period of hunting for waterfowl. And so there seems to be a lot of conflict with the various uses around Lake Earl, but in particular, occupying some of these areas with some weed management, which folks feel that could occur outside of the hunting periods and not restrict so much some of these areas to closures for that very short period of time. So it's a very contentious piece. I appreciate the Taloa Dini Nation hosting the conversation. I think there was probably close to, I don't know, seventy people in attendance at the meeting, so very well attended, and appreciate the county's involvement at that meeting. Continued discussions on the Agriculture, Environment, and Natural Resources Committee for California State Association of Counties in preparation for our November CSAC Annual Meeting around water. It's going to be a very long conversation, and the Executive Board has requested that we make it a prime piece for our committee discussion, and they've given us close to three hours to have that discussion with the state and the county. So looking forward to chairing that this year and getting into some of the information that I'm not entirely too familiar with, which is issues to the far south of us, south of San Francisco, where water battles are insanely important to many communities, and agricultural farmers for that matter. Had a meeting with Supervisor Hemmingson and Neil Lopez and our friends from state parks and national parks, in this case, Steve Metz and Aaron Gates. Aaron replaced Brett Silver not too long ago, where we discussed weed management on public lands, Point St. George, potential closures on our Howland Hill Road, which has become a very popular visitor site and overflowing, I guess, with traffic, and in addition, potential community visitor centers, so a joint information-type center here in our community, which the public, in this case, would be served through either the chamber or national state parks. So it's an interesting concept and idea, and hopefully it'll get legs and traction, so it's a one-stop shop when you come to this county to get information about the area. Very excited about that. Having several conversations with areas along Elk Valley Road, crossroads, and Highway One-O-One where some encampments are starting to establish and trying to get those taken care of with code enforcement. I really appreciate their time and attention to that. Really wanted to congratulate the Forest Service and the Smith River Collaborative for the Gordon Hill Project and getting that underway and started this year. That fire protection piece around the townsite of Gasky is incredibly important, especially for insurance purposes. Also attended a meeting with Supervisor Hemmingson and Heidi Kunkstal, Director of Community Services on, for U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, to meet their new members down in Arcata, and appreciate Ms. Kunkstal setting that up for us. Had continued discussions with Ricardo Lara's office on fire insurance rates, as most people are approaching their annual insurance premiums this time of year, and of course, Smith River, Hayuchi, and Gasky are, and Klamath for that matter, coming under some high insurance rates this year, and oftentimes right now seeing their policies canceled. So trying to figure out a balance here at the state level on what we could continue to do. I think one of the areas that we need to focus in is on these Board of Forestry regulations that we seem to have stalled out, but do play a factor into those insurance ratings, so focused on that. Juvenile Hall has been a big discussion, as you heard here today, and taken a lot of constituent calls on that and their opinions. In addition, reading through the Public Defenders Report, which we'll hear a report on today, and then also comments by Building Healthy Communities, taking some discussion with them and their opinions on that Public Defenders Report. Also had a conversation with the Director of the California Coastal Commission, Jack Ainsworth, on Camp Park parcel, which will likely transfer ownership, a small parcel just south of Camp Park, will likely transfer from its current ownership into potentially the county's hands, tribe's hands, or another nonprofit-type agency. In addition, a lot of discussion with constituents about the confusion around Measure U and Measure R. In addition, just wanted to bring up, as Supervisor Short and Supervisor Starkey mentioned, about the tsunami drills and evacuation this coming Thursday. Definitely participate in it. Looking forward to seeing how IT and making sure there's no issues with our Everbridge system and that rolling out smoothly. I'm really looking forward to seeing this go into effect and seeing the community response. And that is the end of my report. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. Well, I had a little bit of stuff going on. I wanted to thank Supervisor Short, or Vice Chair Short, for stepping in to do agenda review for me, so I appreciate that. Anything goes wrong is all his fault today, so. As was mentioned by Supervisor Mastin and Supervisor Starkey, there was a Last Chance Grade mitigation meeting. And that was, that's to lay the groundwork to get these mitigation impacts taken care of with, I think it's mostly going to be a tree issue, whether that's old-growth redwood or old-growth Douglas fir or spruce or whatever it is. So they've got a very specific tree count, every tree that's going to be impacted by either the X or F, which X is pretty much on the same alignment, F is the tunnel. So we'll keep going on that and see if we can't get down to it. I was hoping that we would have an update on the agenda. They were supposed to give an update, but we ran out of time. There was just too much discussion going on. And as was mentioned, Supervisor Starkey and I had a two-by-two with the Uroch Tribe, which is, I thought was a great meeting, a great partnership on doing some mitigation work down there, so I think that's all going to be good. As Supervisor Howard said, we met with state parks and fish and wildlife along with community development staff with, yeah, state parks and fish and wildlife. Had a lot of meetings with them the last couple of weeks. Had a meeting later on to discuss activity with state parks and fish and wildlife about Point St. George Project. We've got a plan for improving the parking lot out there, toilets, trails, the trails project, all kinds of stuff out there. So hopefully that continues to move on and funding is acquired for that action. As Supervisor Howard said, we had a meet-and-greet with Fish and Wildlife. One of the members was interested in the Gobi, the other one, or one of the other ones was interested in the silver spot butterfly, and we have both of those things in our county, so that'll be interesting to see how that goes. As Supervisor Short mentioned, we had a meeting with Spectrum having to do with broadband and touring their facilities, but it was nice that Assembly Member Wood was there. He's been going through this process with other providers and was surprised to hear some of the answers that Spectrum had to some of the issues that were going along with this middle mile, trying to service the middle mile, and then eventually the last mile. So it was great that he asked the questions that he did and to get a different perspective on what the answers were that he was hearing from other companies and what Spectrum has been doing. So that was kind of nice to have that interaction there. As Supervisor Howard said, there was a, it wasn't just Lake Earl Wildlife Area. We also had some discussion, a public discussion out at, in Smith River about the Point St. George, Saxton's boat launch, Pebble Beach access areas, everything that Fish and Wildlife is doing. But the main part of the meeting was to get the discussion between the waterfowlers, the hunters, and the people wanting to remove the European beach crash, which impacted closures, that the state set up for that. And so trying to work through that to see where there's no lost time in the, for the hunters. They've already been reduced. They lost, I think, some sixteen hundred acres that they've gotten taken away from them because the Fish and Wildlife no longer manages the state park lands out there. So they've been whittled down, and now they're wanting some other closures, and so they're not very happy about it, but hopefully we can come sort of, come to some sort of resolution. Had to go down to Oakland for a Golden State Natural Resources meeting, actually a Golden State Finance Authority meeting, which has financed part of this project for GSNR, Golden State Natural Resources. financed part of this project for GSNR, Golden State Natural Resources. The Golden State Natural Resources was formed to help with forest health and forest resilience and have come up with a project, a fairly large project. They've got a, a twenty-year stewardship agreement with the Forest Service for the state of California, for the, for the state of California. So they've got this huge amount of biomass that's available to them and they're working on putting together a pellet project and it's going to be somewhere in the half a billion-dollar range for, for that project. And so it's really exciting. We were down to, to do a tour of the Port of Richmond, which is where the, the pellets will be loaded onto ships to go throughout the, the world. So unfortunately, I got stuck in Oakland for a couple of days, one day due to weather, one day for maintenance. So I was supposed to leave Thursday and didn't leave till Saturday, so. And I couldn't get a car. They had run out of rental cars, so otherwise I would have drove back. But anyway, that didn't work. Also had a North Coast Fisherman's Cable Committee meeting down in Eureka, discussing our, our budget for the year and the two cables now are, are completely in, I mean, they're completely across the ocean anyway, and they're hooked, hooked at each end. And so we're, we're moving forward with that. And within that, within our budget talks, we talked about giving scholarships with the funds that we receive for scholarships to Delmarcht students as well as Humboldt County students. So. And that's about it for me on all my stuff, and I'm sure that I've run over time. We are going to move on to our public comment period, I'm thinking. Now I've got it here somewhere. Yeah, our ten twenty-five timed item, public comment. Members of the public may address the board on matters which are within the jurisdiction of the board. If you're addressing the board regarding a matter listed on the agenda, you may be asked to hold your comments until we take up that item. Limit your comments to three minutes. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Karen Sanders. I'm the Chair of the Delmarcht Republican Party and I have a resolution that we passed this last week. I want to read it to you. Resolution twenty twenty-two dash one. Whereas, the Declaration of Independence, the founding document of the United States of America states, we hold these truths self-evident that all men are created equal, they are endowed by their Creator and certain unalienable rights, that among those is life, liberty, and then the pursuit of happiness, life being the first of these declared rights. And whereas, as on March twenty-seventeen, the Californi, excuse me, the American College of Pediatrics published an abstract stating that the predominance of human biological research confirms that human life begins at conception fertilization. At fertilization, the human being emerges genetically distinct and individualized zygotic living human organism, a member of the species Homo sapiens, needing only the proper environment to grow and develop. The difference being the individual is in its adult state and in its exotic state is one of form and not nature. And whereas, the Supreme Court in a five-four landmark decision of Dobbs versus Jackson Women's Health Organization overturned Roe versus Wade on June twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two. And therefore, each and every innocent life is unique and precious to God. And whereas, human life begins at the moment of conception and continues uninterrupted until the moment of natural birth. And whereas, the life of the mother and the child must always be protected and preserved. And whereas, the protection of all human life is important to the citizens of Delmarcht County and the Republican Central Committee. And whereas, the California Legislature, year after year, diminishing the protection of the unborn, as evident by another current pro-abortion proposition, to enshrine it through a constitutional amendment. And therefore, it be resolved that we, the members of the Delmarcht County Republican Central Committee, declare that innocent life, including fetal life, must always be protected and that the society must protect those that cannot protect themselves. Be it further resolved by the members of the Delmarcht County Republican Central Committee, declare its opposition to Proposition One and its result of removal of all limits on abortion. This was passed and adopted by the Delmarcht Republican Central Committee on the nineteenth day of October twenty-twenty-two. And you each have a copy I gave to the clerk. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
Hello, my name is Andy Gossar. I live on South Bank Road, Crescent City. I just want to read something I wrote down. "We, the neighbors who live here, ask for you not to ignore this and help us save our neighborhoods from becoming Hotel Row. Our, our rights do matter. R1A zoning residential agricultural, the purpose," and this is right out of the zoning laws, which I have right here, "the district classification is designed for the orderly development of suburban homesites in a one-to-five acre category to encourage a suitable environment for family life and those who desire small residential-type farmland. Last Friday, for example, a motorhome decided to park in my driveway at my house. I, I knew where it must have come from because I know my neighbors and I know that none of them would just do that. We, we called Dave Powell Sell, the hotel's owner. He did not answer, so we left a polite message that we had a problem with one of his tenants. Please call back." We have not been called back. "We should not have to enforce the laws or be expected to police our neighborhoods. I had to go over to the hotel and find the owner and tell them to move it. People, if they are watching this, need to step up and to be heard. Come to these meetings and write letters. Look, look it up. People all over this state and country have had enough of this residential hotels that skirt the laws and destroy our neighborhoods. These hotels have become party destinations, gathering places for out-of-towners who do what they would, would not do in their own neighborhoods, loud nuisance, cussing, and music at all hours of the night. The septic systems in these residential areas can only accommodate four to six family members. These hotels have ten to thirty people at times, overwhelming these systems and into the Smith River upstream from Crescent City Water System. Help us." I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Andy. Next.
Good morning. My name's Vince Tomasic. I live on South Bank Road. I also would like to talk about the VRBL issue. In, I know Andy talked about the motorhome issue, but it started a little earlier at my house. I was waiting to go to dinner with my girlfriend, waiting for some neighbors to come pick us up. And Robin goes, "Vince, Vince, there's a lady in the driveway. She's walking all around the property." I go, "What?" So I get up. It's about four-thirty, five o'clock. I go out and there's this lady. And I said, "Excuse me, can I help you?" And she says, "Yeah," she says, "I'm with the vacation rental next door." I said, "Yes, ma'am. Can I help you?" And she says, "Well," she said, "do you, do you own the vacation rental next door?" And I said, "No, I, I don't own it." I said, "I live here. This is my home. What can I do for you?" She says, "Well, I've got an RV, a motorhome, and, and I need to park. I was wondering if I could park it in this space." Well, there's a driveway connecting Dave's place and my place. It's about fifteen feet. Well, she wanted to park her RV there for a couple of days. And I said, "No, no, you can't." And, but when I went outside, she was looking all around my yard, up my driveway. She couldn't have made it, made the turn onto this little area. She would have had to come down my driveway to pull in. But anyway, that's kind of what we deal with every once in a while. And I got this little piece that I wanted to read to you. I, I found it on the internet. "Out-of-town visitors upset the peaceful enjoyment of longstanding residential neighborhoods. Short-term renters have no stake in the community and therefore they have no reason to care how the neighborhood around them suffers from their vacation activities. Zoning code laws keep hotels out of residential neighborhoods and exist to accommodate the inevitable disruptions of tourism. Illegal short-term rentals ignore zoning restrictions and make virtually any residence into a hotel party house." And that's kind of what happens. I'm very, very happy to hear that this board is going to take a look at this issue. I really am. Thank you so much for taking that step forward because I think it is a good step forward. We need some regulations. We need something. Thank you very much.
You bet. Thank you. Any other public comment?
Good morning.
Morning.
My name is David Dornus. I'm a Commissioner with the Juvenile Justice Commission and I'm going to give just a brief overlay on Juvenile Hall closure.
Can you wait until we take that item up? We have an, we have an item on the agenda for that. I'm going to ask for public comment at that time, if you don't mind.
Good morning.
Morning.
So in regards to this vacation issue that's going on, maybe the owners of these vacation rentals could, if you could develop a contract that says, you know, they'll be kicked out if they raise too much noise in the neighborhood by someone calling the police and getting them kicked out. I mean, the only way to stop the activity is to enforce, you know, it has to be in the contract and they'll lose the money that they spent on that rental. Because, you know, you don't want Delmarcht County to just be a dump site for Party Town USA. That's not what we're about. And it does have an impact not only on the neighbors but on the wildlife as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Good morning, Board. Brandon Bieber. I don't know if, I guess I'll hold this up. You know, I, I really can't express my disappointment since I've been interacting with this board for the last year. It's been very disappointing. I find your leadership arrogant and very irresponsible. You don't take accountability for the poor policies you've created. This agenda today has many examples of the ways in which you guys have failed. And I'd just like to point out that the biasness in the election and the pamphlet is very disheartening. People spend a lot of time going out and promoting the repeal of Measure R and then county council somehow determines that the wording, words aren't exactly right, so they go out and get more signatures. And now the assessor, and the ballot, they change the wording again. So how would you like it worked so we can make it easier for you guys, so we can give you more money and so you can spend it carelessly? I understand, you know, the fishing game met, you know, you guys have lots of meetings in regards to the, to the vacation rentals. How many times did they have to show up and ask for something to be done? I mean, not like you guys are going to do anything, but at least you guys have another meeting, right? Have a meeting again. Come up with a plan for a plan. Yeah, wildlife area, you know, there was a, the highly pathogenic Aryan influenza was here. It killed forty-three thousand chickens. Nothing's to be said. Our local public health officer is nowhere to be heard, although he makes, I don't know what, six grand a month or something. And I find it very odd that there's no wild birds that have been detected in Delmarcht County with this HPAI virus, but it happened in livestock. So if we could get an update on that, I'd appreciate it. Vote yes on TNU.
Thank you. Next.
My name is Lola Puckhead. I'm the broker of Coastal Redwood Properties. I've been a broker for forty years and fifteen, excuse me, thirteen here in Delmarcht County. Never in that time of my experience has the city or the county needed to get involved in what a homeowner of a fee simple property does with their property. Long-term rental, short-term rental, I do an abundance of property management, including fifteen vacation rentals and three transitional rentals, which I call them transitional, therefore contracted nurse, you know, so they are of the short-term rentals. It's a homeowner's right to rent it. There, it's not a commercial property. As I heard at the last Board of Supervisors meeting I attended just as an observer to see what was going on, they are not commercial properties. They're not hotels. And a homeowner does have the right to rent it. There's no complaints about long-term rentals. I haven't heard of that. But that being said, property managers and homeowners should be good neighbors. And it is our desire to be a good neighbor. With our long-term rentals, I have a contract in regards to noise. With my vacation rentals, I have a contract. I had one issue only, and that was in Smith River, and I went out and met with the neighbor and we came up with a plan, never a problem since. Cut down the bushes so people weren't going onto his property to see the ocean. Our bushes were too tall, so I went out and met with him. I make sure that I meet the neighbors and they have my number so that they can reach me. And it's important that we, being good neighbors, that we do govern that. It shouldn't have to be a city or a county getting involved in that, but to be good neighbors. And, you know, just for instance, I have, on that particular property, when I welcome them to the property, I say, "Do not go onto the neighbor's property. He has complained about it. The last time he called the sheriff. Be a good neighbor." And so I just want to encourage homeowners, I know that Dave does it as well, and he is a responsible homeowner, as well as a responsible vacation rental owner, that we are conscientious and that we do govern that. If I get a call from someone, I go out. I, I will listen. And I even had a time where the neighbor complained and I went out and listened and I said, "It's seven o'clock and, you know, they're having a barbecue. It's not overwhelming noise." But I do govern the properties and that is important. But that being said, people who own a fee simple property have the right to either rent it long-term, medium-term, or short-term. They're not hotels. They're not commercial.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Hi there. My name is Dave Powell. I am the offender. We have the home next to Vince and I am shocked and appalled at the behavior of someone claiming to be in my home with that RV. That's ridiculous. And unfortunately, we can't control idiots in our lives. And I, Andy, I don't have your phone number. I checked my phone and I didn't get any messages. If Vince calls, if Vince's name pops up on my phone, I, if it is at all possible, I pick it up and, and talk to him. I, I am really sorry about that. And I think, you know, there are a lot of things that we're talking about here, that the commercial side of things, is this a appropriate use? I stopped and talked to Heidi Kunkstal this last week and say, "Do I need a use permit?" She said, "No, we don't do use permits for those kinds of things." And that's great. I, we have, I really feel that the focus here for these folks and that really the bottom line, they talk about crime going up, they talk about traffic, all things that, all, all ills of the neighborhood are blamed on the vacation rentals. And, and I don't believe that's an accurate representation. The real thing that is critically important is the noise. And Levon and I, last week, spent over four thousand dollars on a six-foot fence between our property and Vince's property. It's a beautiful fence. It looks great on his side. We talked about it before I did it and he was happy about that. That is a critical thing and, and we're doing our best. And again, keep in mind, like I said a couple of weeks ago, Vince's house is a hundred and fifty feet away from my house. His deck is that far, and you know, there's a space for a city lot in between us. So, and you can't even see his house from my house because of the shrubs and, and now the fence. So, and you can't even see his house from my house because of the shrubs and now the fence. We're doing our best. We also are cutting back on the number of guests that we allow in our home. Unfortunately, we're under contracts all through next October, but we're doing our best to cut that back, too. We want to be good neighbors. We want to do our very best, but, you know, I don't have a retirement. I don't have a pension. I've been self-employed in this county my whole adult life, and in a lot of cases, barely survived. These homes are our retirement, and we try to do the very best we can. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, Patty Adams here. I just wanted to add support for what Dave Powell said and what Lola said. We are all trying to be good neighbors, and we already do have contracts in place through whatever platform it is, whether it's Airbnb or VRBO. It's explained pretty explicitly to all guests, the rules. And it's much like if you were to go somewhere, it's common sense that when it starts getting dark, of course, it's dark now, early, but eight o'clock-ish or whatever, the noise level should dissease or go down. I know that the things that Dave said as far as the fencing, he's aware of this, and I think that we should be governing our own properties as property owners and that the neighbors should have an open communication. I don't feel that the city or the county should have to step in and start managing. I think that we have enough government controls in place to take care of what they're responsible for. I know that there are some noise abatement type of systems where you can hear if it starts getting to a certain level. Maybe that's something that we can look at as well. I did share that with some other realtors and property managers. It's a fairly low-cost system, much like a video security type of system, but purely around noise. So, as much as we hear from the neighbors on South Bank that are unhappy, I want to make sure that you're aware that there are plenty of other properties where this is not an issue, and we are bringing in a lot of TOT money that I think our county is very happy for. Thank you.
Thanks.
Good morning. Mark Bauer. I own a vacation rental here in town. But I think what it comes down to, if you're going to instruct staff to deal with the vacation rental issues, I think you need to deal with all the issues, meaning all, all rental properties, not just single out the vacation rentals. Because I've been in a neighborhood where I've had a rental property right next door to me, contacted the owner. The owner lived in Las Vegas. Nothing happened. And if you want to look at the police log, how many times I've called the police, over and over and over again, nothing happened. And as much as I feel for these people, that's not the progress that you need to go. You need to go down this route where they call the police and they find the landlord. If you're having repeatable problems, then the sheriff needs to deal with it and find the landlord.
Thanks.
Norma Williams, Chapter President, Delnart County Employees Association, SEIU 1021. I'm not going to talk about vacation rentals. It's definitely out of my purview, okay? The passing of Measure U would strike at the heart of impacted county employees and the programs and services we provide. It would also strike at the heart of this community. Basically, what I've noticed, and this is a recent article that I read, where it said that any, that county sales tax isn't justified, that what was passed in 2020 isn't justified. And I quite frankly have an argument with that. So, basically, what the community is being told, that mandated services, that yes, are paid by taxpayer dollars, they are paid by taxpayer dollars, those are not justified, that the programs and the services that we provide are not justified. So, what is justified? Less law enforcement? So, you want to see the county residents have less deputies on the street? Less DA investigators? Less dispatchers to answer your call? Less probation officers to keep track of released offenders? Okay. Do you want to see, shall we say, less code enforcement officers to deal with blight in this community? So, if there's, if you complain about blight on your property or next to your property or next to your business, that's justified? That that blights there, that you have one less code enforcement officer to deal with that? So, when your property and your home value goes down, that's justified? Okay? Animal control. I've heard many, many a time, even here, attending meetings, where we had people complaining about less code enforcement officers because there was an animal nuisance problem in Fort Dick. Because of Measure R, we were able to staff up, start to staff up that department and start to make improvements to the resources that they have there. Much-needed improvements, by the way. But, hmm, now Measure U is saying, "No, we don't want that. That jeopardizes that staff. That jeopardizes that improvements over there." Okay? So, when you have less animal control officers, that means then that neglected and abused animals in this community will continue to be abused and neglected. But that's okay. That's justified. So, you don't want to see this community grow? You don't want to see it develop? You don't want to see any of your capital or your property or capital improvement projects taken care of? Or do you just want them to see waiting, waiting, waiting?
Thank you, Norm.
Okay. Basically, we're asking for your support. Vote no on Measure U. It is not good for you. It's not good for this community. Less is not more unless you feel that you're justified. If you feel that you deserve less, that's what you'll get.
Thank you, Norm. Any more public comment? Okay, seeing no more public comment, we'll close this public comment period, and we'll move on to our 10:30 timed item. We're running a little tardy. We're going to receive a report on the NCRP III disaster plan project and accept a $1,200 grant from the Humboldt Area Foundation. Kimmy, welcome.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Supervisors. It's great to see everybody. Thank you very much for providing me an opportunity to provide an update on the NCRP III project. So, for the folks that don't know, my name's Kimmy Scott. I'm with a company called Title Basin Government Consulting, and they're providing in-kind project support for the NCRP III program. This program is to create a natural and cultural resource protection and preservation program in the face of disaster response in Delnart County. And so, that consists of a disaster plan and the development of a disaster response team to protect those vital resources, and then the training, the equipment, and the standard operating guidelines for that team to perform their work. So, as you all know, you provided the go-ahead for this in February. We did a kickoff meeting with the planning team in April, and since that time, the plan has become about 95% of the way drafted. We've had two project planning meetings, and then a lot of engagement with these different groups within our county to get some feedback. A plan like this is sort of new. There's plans for this type of response at the institutional level, like for museums, and at the federal level, here at the local government level. We had to sort of build a new framework, and a lot of discussion went into how to make that really effective. So, what's coming up next with this? As noted, there's something on the agenda today to receive a grant from Humboldt Area Foundation. The plan's 95% of the way there. So, would really like to be able to use this grant to hold a workshop, to get people together face-to-face, recognize that their time has value, provide a small stipend for that time and some dinner so that we can get together, and, you know, there can be some sensitive subjects within this. And so, really want to get all those participating cultural groups, stewards within our community together to talk through and make sure that the research that has been done, the conversations that have been done to build this plan, everybody agrees with the verbiage and the stance that's taken in there. From that, the other things that still need to happen, the plan delegates roles and responsibilities to a lot of different groups, agencies, and organizations throughout the county if there was a disaster that impacted these resources. So, the plan needs to go out to those folks and make sure that they are okay with the responsibility that's been assigned to them and adjust accordingly if needed. But my goal is to have a plan delivered to the disaster council by the end of this year for review and approval to be moved on to the Board of Supervisors. Following that, the in-kind donation from Title Basin also covers development of an exercise. It's a little out of order on how we would normally do it, because we haven't recruited and put the team together yet. But that, you know, the exercise information can be developed now and put on a shelf. And then, when you are able to hire a new emergency manager, would like to work with that person to start the recruitment for this team. I've already done some groundwork to try to get some funding to provide the equipment and training for this team. So, I want to get these folks in, get them trained up, and then sometime next year, put them through an exercise, let them get their feet wet, and be prepared to launch them live so that the next time something bad happens around here, we can make sure that those really vital resources that really help protect the identity of the folks here in Delnart County, which helps support recovery in a more efficient and effective manner, can take place. So, I don't know if you all have any questions for me.
Any questions from board members? No? You must have done good.
All righty. Thank you very much.
You bet. Any public comment on this presentation?
So, I wasn't really clear in understanding what the vital resources that Ms. Scott was talking about in regards to this. I think that if you have to give people gift cards of $50 and pay for their dinner in order to congregate and develop a plan, I don't think that should be on the backs of the taxpayers. People don't want to serve their community, that's on them. But I don't think it should be on us. And if this is in regards to preserving artifacts during an emergency, I think lives are more important than artifacts. Thank you.
Thank you. Maybe you guys can explain, or maybe this is just another good example of the mismanagement of government. Where does the grant come from? Is that not taxpayer money? Anyone know? Is it not taxpayer money? Taxpayer money? No? Would you please make your comments?
Seems odd that we're giving $1,200.
We are not.
We're accepting money from a lobbyist then. If it's not, if it's not a government entity, it's a lobbyist, and they're going to give out. I'd like to be invited to that if I can. I'd like the $50 gift card. Is it just attendees? I don't know. The poor use of funds.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this presentation? Supervisor Howard?
Yeah, I'd just make a motion to accept the $1,200 grant from the Humboldt Area Foundation, a nonprofit organization in Humboldt County that also serves Delnart County, for the movement towards this workshop for natural and cultural resource protection.
I have a motion?
A second.
I have a motion and a second? Any other discussion? Kylie, would you please poll vote?
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Supervisor Mastin?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Okay, we are now at, we are past our 10:45 item. We're going to move on to that. We're going to adjourn as the Board of Supervisors, reconvene as the Board of Equalization, and conduct a public hearing for change of assessment on AP number 101-210-012. Who's going to start this?
The appellant begins.
Chair, before he speaks, I have to swear him in.
Yeah, we need to get you, Cappy, we need to get you sworn in.
Could you just raise your right hand and state your name?
I'm sorry?
Raise your right hand and state your name.
Cappy Dobbs, D O B B S.
Could you, do you solemnly state, under penalty of perjury, that the evidence that you shall give in this issue or matter shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thanks.
Hello.
Hi.
Thanks for your time. I'll try to be quick here. We, the reason I'm here, we have a lot in Spyglass, which is right next to the Oregon border. And what we did, we started talking, or they called me, was the Sutter Coast Hospital four, five years ago. I'm getting old, so I don't remember everything as like I used to. And what they wanted was a, I talked to Eugene, who was the superintendent at that time. He wanted a rental up on Spyglass for new doctors he was recruiting. And we worked that out. I felt like I was doing something for the county. I do not do rentals, so that was different for me, but it was a nice idea to bring. He said he brings doctors in. They spend six months before they sign the contract to stay or whatever, and that would give them time. And so, I felt I was doing a favor to the Delnart County, to the area, and to the hospital to do a nice rental on Spyglass. We did not sell it to anybody. There was never change of money of any kind. I went to the county, got all the permits I needed to do the building, went to the bank to loan money to borrow, and I own that, when I bought that in 1974. I came here a long time ago. I found this place and said, "Oh, my gosh, this is the nicest place in the world. I'm retiring here." So, that was why the price is low, because I bought that and did the subdivision later, and so we had a low price on it, very low compared to what it's worth today. But the bank, when I got my plans, I paid for everything. I paid the water fee, the fee for the school district. I paid all of the plans that the engineer did to do the grading. I got the plans from the engineer that did the roof and the whole bit, went to the county and paid in full the county what they require before they even checked the plans. Then I had all of the letters from the school district and the water that I needed to get the permit. I'm ready to go. The hospital is very interested in what we were doing. And then I went to the bank to get the loan recorded, and they said, "We can't work with a CRF team, which is a general partnership. We want your name on it." I said, "Okay, I'll write my name." The other two people were my two children. They own, we own everything through trust, which I've given you a copy of the trust. So, we didn't change a thing. The kids own everything anyhow when we're gone, or if we're disabled, they run everything. So, their ownership is there, and it always will be. And what happened, the hospital had some problems, and all of a sudden, it was chaotic here. And you probably remember, what was it, 10 years ago, eight years ago, whatever, when all the doctors said they were leaving? Well, that was when I was getting ready to record the loan to bill the rental. They left me out, and so I canceled everything, because I wasn't sure what was going to happen here. And there's where we are now. What has happened to me as far as our kids and everything, we're reassessed. We're reassessed quite a lot, about five times, what the value was. It never changed ownership. There was no money ever changed. The kids still own everything through the trust. So, there's a rule in the government, I could go look that up or read it to you, that their ownership, if it doesn't change, if it's the same, there's no tax advantage. In other words, you don't raise your taxes. And that's where I'm complaining, because the assessor, whoever who does the taxes, never would let me talk to them, as far as when they went in and said, they said, "No, you go to the Board of Supervisors." So, the reason I'm here is because I couldn't explain everything or give them the trust. So, I had to send you the trust through the email. You, I think, sent it. So, you have a copy of the trust. And no ownership has changed. The kids still own everything, and that's what we did, because the kids were on the, our two children were on the general partnership. And the thing that I did was I paid everything out of our regular bank account. So, no sales, no change of ownership as far as any company, no money ever changed hands. But I did not get to bill the rental that the hospital wanted because of commotion that they had. And if you, we all should remember that, because that was frustrating. they had, and if you, we all should remember that, because that was frustrating, to read in the paper that all the doctors are leaving. And that's when I was doing this. Do you have any questions?
Any questions from Board members? Yeah, not, not now, Cappy, thanks.
Okay. So all I'm asking is, I want to keep my old tax.
Of course you do.
I don't want to be penalized for trying to help the county when, that's what I did. And I lost quite a lot of money by not doing that, too. All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
So I have some packets for you guys to follow along with my presentation. Just give them to you, Kylie?
Yeah.
Can I ask you a question before you get started?
Yes.
Did you, did you?
Chair, I need to swear him in first.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
Can I get you to raise your right hand and state your name?
Brantley Cobb.
Do you solemnly state under penalty of perjury that the evidence that you shall give in this issue or matter, or matter, excuse me, shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Anyway, Cappy says that he tried to meet, and nobody would meet with him. That's not usually how we like to do things. We'd like to get this straightened out before it comes to the board.
Yeah, in my opinion, that's not true.
Okay.
We've, we've met numerous times.
Thank you.
All right. Everyone has a copy? All right. Good morning. Thank you for meeting here today regarding Assessment Appeal Application 2020-005. My name is Brantley Cobb. I'm the Assistant Assessor for Delnarke County and have been with the Assessor's Office for eight years now. Before I begin my presentation, I thought it would be important to note that within my presentation, I'll be going over quite a few documents and codes, in hopes to make things easier and more efficient for you all to follow along. I provided an exhibit summary sheet. You should see that on this, I believe it's the second page. Please feel free to reference this sheet as I go through my presentation, and of course, if you would like to take a look at the full document, I provided that in the packet as well. So this appeal brought before you today is not a question of value, instead a question on if a reappraisal should have occurred for parcel one oh one, two ten, twelve, from the result of the recorded document 2017-2321. And this is dating back to June sixth, twenty seventeen. So it is a few years back. Per California Revenue and Taxation Codes sixty-one J, sixty-two A two, and Property Tax Rules four sixty-two, one eighty, it is the assessor's opinion that a reappraisal was required by law. So it is important to note that document 2017-2321 is granting property out of a partnership. So this is a partnership that we're dealing with. This piece of information is critical, because Revenue and Taxation Code sixty-one, which is Exhibit A, states, except as otherwise provided in Section sixty-two, a change of ownership as defined in Section sixty includes, but is not limited to, the transfer of any interest in real property between a corporation, partnership, or other legal entity and a shareholder, partner, or any other person. So with Section sixty-one stating a partnership transfer is a change of ownership, except as otherwise provided in Section sixty-two, we should look at Section sixty-two, so, which is Exhibit B. Section sixty-two, change of ownership shall not include, so Section sixty-two tells us what's not, any transfer between an individual or individuals and a legal entity, or between legal entities such as a co-tenancy to a partnership, partnership to a corporation, or a trust to a co-tenancy that results solely in a change in the method of holding title to the real property, and in which, and I bolded this on the packet, proportional ownership interest of the transferors and transferees, whether represented by stock, partnership interest or otherwise, in each and every piece of real property transferred, remain the same after the transfer. So it's important to note that the interests have to be the same before and after. So that brings the question, did the proportional ownership interest of the transferors and transferees remain the same after the transfer? So Exhibit C, per the affidavit of members, partners submitted to the Assessor's Office and signed by Cappy Dobbs, which was also in the office, on eighteen twenty seventeen, the ownership of Sierra F-18 Limited Partnership is as follows. Cappy Dobbs, ninety-four percent, Thomas Hugh Dobbs, two and a half percent, Kelly Dobbs Hamilton, two and a half percent, Elk Run LLC, one percent. And that was prior to the transfer. The docu, the document in question, Exhibit D, that created this reappraisal assigns property to be transferred fifty percent to Judith Dobbs, wife as community property with right of survivorship, and fifty percent to Cappy Dobbs, husband as community property with right of survivorship. That is not a proportional transfer, as the transferee's interests are not identical to the transferor's interest. So on Exhibit E, there's also an example of this type of scenario listed within Property Tax Rule four sixty-two, one eighty-two. And the Example Two states, transfer of real property from A and B as equal co-tenants to Corporation X, where A and B each take back fifty percent of stock, no change of ownership. However, if A and B each take back forty-nine percent of stock and C receives two percent of stock, then there will be, and again, this is bolded, a change in ownership of the entire property. And that's kind of what happened here. So it's also important to note that the transfer prior to this, which is Exhibit F, putting the property into the ownership of Sierra F-18 in twenty-ten, was done without a change of ownership reappraisal occurring. That is because the proportional ownership interests of the transferors and transferees remain the same after the transfer. Therefore, no change in ownership reappraisal occurred on that property. That is important to note, as it shows the property had been transferred and avoided reappraisal in the past, as well shows consistency with how these types of transferred, transfers have been handled within our office. Lastly, we need to look at the value. I know it's not really a value question, but we look at the value, the Assessor's Office enrolled, which is Exhibit G, comparable sales will show you a small market around the event date ranging from forty-nine thousand to two-hundred thousand. The three comparable sales highlighted are all sales on Spyglass Road, but only one of those sales occurred in the same year. The other two sales are from twenty fourteen and fifteen. When looking at location, data transfer, and size together, and as holding the most weight, it was determined that twenty seventeen sale was indicator of fair market value and assessed value of fifty thousand was enrolled for the reappraisal following document twenty seventeen two three two one. In conclusion, with respect to the California Revenue and Taxation Codes sixty-two A two, Property Tax Rules four sixty-two, one eighty-two, and the signed affidavit of Members Partners Form stating a non-proportional interest transfer, we ask that the Board uphold the Assessor's determination of reassessment for parcel one oh one, two ten, zero one two, zero zero zero, and uphold the values enrolled and result of recorded document twenty seventeen two three two one. Any questions?
Questions from Board members?
Sorry.
Any questions? No questions?
So, so how are, how are you determining that the property left the trust?
So the property was not in the trust. If we look at, look at the exhibit here, I think it's Exhibit F. Exhibit F. So prior to it going to Sierra F-18, the property was owned by Cappy Dobbs, a married man and his sole and separate property, Thomas Dobbs, a married man and as a sole and separate property, Kelly Hamilton, a married man, woman, as her sole and separate property, Elk Run LLC as a California limited liability company. And the percentages were as it showed with the documents signed by Mr. Dobbs. And then that went granted into the partnerships. That's why there was no change of ownership in twenty-ten, because the percentages were the same, going from separate ownership to the trusts, or to the partnership. So the trust was never involved. We, we don't show any records showing the property ever being transferred into the trust.
Right. Got it? Yes.
Yeah, just because there's a trust doesn't mean all your properties are included in the trust. You have to put the property into your trust. You have to, there has to be some type of document, you know, recorded.
Right.
Or at least, you know, that, there's nothing we have that shows it was ever, the property was ever put into the trust.
Okay. No? Mr. Dobbs?
Supervisor Mastin, anything?
No.
Any other questions for now?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dobbs, did you want to add something?
I'm a little frustrated, so you have to put up with me. Number one, that property was bought in nineteen seventy-four by Sierra F-18. It has never been taken out of that. Everything we own is in that trust. And you have a copy of it, but I took out the stuff that I, because it was sent to everybody. It was in the email to get to you. And it doesn't have everything listed. I have it if you need it, but it's everything we own. And Sierra F-18 bought the property in nineteen seventy-four. I came up here from Oklahoma to California, and I came to Delnarke County from Southern California and couldn't believe the beauty, and said, oh my God, I thought I was country. I'm retiring right here, and that's why I'm here now. That is the problem I had with the Assessor's Office. I went in when they denied, or when they changed, I feel like I tried to give something to the county, spent several thousand dollars doing all the permits, you know what it takes, the school fee, and all, all paid by me, and then the Assessor's Office is penalizing me every year because I tried to do something for the county. That's my problem as far as my attitude is concerned. I went in to explain it to the Assessor's Office, and they, all they did was bring me up to the Board of Supervisors and say they wanted to, I had to go to you to get, get the permission to, to not do that. In other words, you were the making the decision. The same thing I just heard right now is what I was treated like in the Assessor's Office. That is not the truth, what he just said. And if you want to read what is important, I'll read that. Or I don't want to read it, I'll just tell it. You've got it. The same thing he read. I've got a copy of it. And right down to the bottom, the bottom paragraph, no money was changed hands, the people were in the trust that I put in. Cappy Dobbs now owns it because of the bank to make the loan, but the two kids are in the trust. They owned it from day one, and they still own it. When we die, the kids are going to own everything because of a trust. I went in, and I'm going to tell you one more thing, just because I'm probably frustrated and taking more time I should, but, but the, the people in the treasurer's office, when I went in there to say, what happens when, when, I want, I want to make sure everything's in the trust in my taxes, the kids are on everything we have. And she said, when we die, the kids don't pay taxes because they own everything. So we have everything in a trust for that reason. And the people that are assessing this wouldn't explain, wouldn't talk to me, I couldn't discuss it with them. They sent me up here to the Board of Supervisor's Office, and wouldn't even introduce me as who they were. I had to find out. So I'm very frustrated with that. And I can read right here, it says, it's an exclusive, proportional ownership interest transfers exclusive. You don't pay, you don't do it. You don't have to pay, you're not, I'm, I'm, I'm not expelled or not have to do it or whatever, because the kids own everything in a trust. And they say, there's other people that have the same thing already happened. So what he just read was wrong. He did, I'm, I'm, I'm not transferring names, I'm not doing anything. Everything was in that trust, and he said it wasn't in the trust. Is that what he said? That's what I heard. I have trouble hearing.
He, he said that we don't have record of that. And that's kind of where my question was stemming from, is that...
Right. Well, I gave you a copy of the trust that was back in nineteen, or two thousand seven or something like that. And if I had to give you a copy of that, I had to send it through the email. I didn't want that to go out all over the country, so I sent you the trust.
I do have that, I just don't see anywhere where that piece of property is listed in the trust.
Okay. Everything we own is in that. If you need that, I'll be glad to give it to you, but I couldn't do it because I had to email it to the whole world.
I think what the difference is here is just because you put it in the trust, doesn't mean that's what's on the deed, and the deeds have changed. So the ownership of the deeds have changed. You can put anything in the trust you want, but when you change the deed, which is what the assessors are saying, when you change the names on the deed, not the trust, we're not talking about the trust, because the trust is, this is the way I understand it. The trust is a separate document, and you can put everything in that trust, and you can say, well, it's all in that trust, and that's fine, but that's not what it says on the deed. And the deed is what we're dealing with.
The trust owns everything. The kids get everything, and the trust doesn't change.
But it's the property.
No matter what I do with the property, all my property goes in the trust. Now, I have, I'd be glad to have an attorney send you a letter on that. I don't want to take my word or your word, because neither one of us are, but I've got an attorney that wrote it. In fact, he's my son-in-law. He's a Stanford graduate, he's a major partner in a major law firm, and he's the one that wrote it, and he wants a note. I'll be glad to send you a letter that explains exactly what we did and, and how it's worked on the change.
Yeah, and, and I...
But, but you need to be an attorney to say that, because the trust is a big deal. I have had a person in one of your, runs your office, is one of them, said, as long as it's a trust and it's only your children, then you're okay. So you've got people in the county that work for you that disagree with you, they say that it's okay.
I don't think that that's the case. I think the case is that the trust was never on the deed. Now, I'm not talking about whether you put it in the trust, that's fine, but it needs to be on the deed.
Okay, then would you like a copy that it's on the deed?
I would.
Yeah.
That would absolutely help.
Yeah, if you had a copy that said that the trust is on the...
But I can't, I'm not going to send it. The reason you don't have it is because when I went in to get it sent to you, because to give you a copy of the trust, I had to do it by email. And everybody in the county gets a copy of the email.
We only need the deed, a copy of the deed.
Okay, why don't I send you a copy of everything?
We got it right here.
The grant needs you.
Pardon?
It's right here.
The...
We have the deed, right here.
Okay, you've got the deed.
But it doesn't say.
But it does not have the trust on it.
No, the deed is, is, was changed, but everything on the trust is, is not changing.
And that's what we're, we're not discussing the trust, we're discussing the deed. This is where the assessment comes from, is off the property of, the deed of the property. When you change the ownership of the deed, not the trust, you can change that in and out, up and down, whatever you want, that's yours to deal with. But the deed itself is what we're dealing with. That's my understanding. Have I got this correct, am I completely off base?
He is not hearing. He's not hearing. She needs to be sworn in before she can speak, Chair.
You're going to have to get sworn in. You need to get sworn in first.
Yes.
She'll have to swear in.
Could you say your name, please?
My name's Judith Dobbs.
Do you solemnly state under penalty of perjury that the evidence that you shall give in this issue or matter shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Please speak into the mic. Thank you.
This has always been part of the Sierra F-18 purchase in nineteen seventy-four. He was told, when he thought he was doing something for Eugene, the administrator at the hospital, would we, would we personally build a house that the hospital could use? He agreed to do it, because he was, he thought it was a good, good feeling moment. The bank would not give him a construction loan if it was in a partnership. He had to change it to Dobbs, because I guess they felt they had more control. So that deed was always Sierra F-18 until it was changed for the bank, because I had to sign it.
Yes.
It was always, never, ever in our personal name until the bank said, if you want a construction loan, it's going to be in your name. And I had to sign it. So when all went to hell with Sutter Coast, the doctors, the county, Asante, all of that, he went on the back burner. Okay? He went on the back burner. What he should have done, I guess, is change it back to Sierra F-18, because we had to go in and have that notarized. So that's why you've got a deed with Cappy Dobbs on there. Not, not because it was.
Not, not any change hands.
Well, but no matter, no matter what, Cappy, this was, there was never a purchase, there was never a reason to change it, except he thought. I objected. I objected, okay? I fought it, but I lost. So he, he thought he was helping the bank, the, the hospital. He was approached, he didn't approach them. We weren't going to sell that house, we didn't need to. So I think he's hooked up on this trust. It was, it was always Sierra F-18. So, and Barbara Lopez said, give your trust to them, it will show it. That's the reason he sent you the trust, because Barbara said, do it. Okay? So if, if he ends up, if we end up doing something that he had a good feel moment with me complaining like heck, okay? I didn't care if he had a good feeling moment, but he did it, okay? So if he ends up, we end up paying taxes, that's not going to kill us. It's not going to kill us at all. But it's, it's, it's something that he'll never, ever have another good feeling moment. Okay? You guys get it? Okay?
I want him to have a good feeling moment. I'm not trying to take that away from him, but, you know, I can't get away from the documents are not, are not...
Well, it was changed because the bank said, we won't give you a construction loan.
When you start talking about your personal affairs, that doesn't enter into...
But then that's the whole thing, that is a personal affair.
I, I agree. I mean, but, but this is a legal document, this is what we're, this is what's happening is you're changing it from one entity to another.
But the trust owns it.
But the entity, guess what? We're both, we're all of those entities. I could give you about four more entities that we are. So that is neither here nor there.
Right.
But he was doing what he was told to do, except by me.
And, and so the whole...
There you go.
The moral behind this is, I told you so.
To do what?
I said, the whole moral behind it is, I told you so.
You know what? It's not, because we have been married for sixty-two years.
Good for you.
Okay? So that, he's very accustomed to me, having a say. In fact, I have forty, he has forty-nine percent, I have fifty-one. There we go. So, so if we get, if he gets screwed, that's fine, I couldn't care less, he'll never hear the end of it. So...
Yeah.
I thank you, but I, we've got quite a lot of land left, we've got quite a few lots left. They're all in the trust, and if this happens, we will, we're through. We will not do one more thing for this county.
Yeah.
I'm not going to do something for this county and spend twenty-five thousand dollars and give it away for nothing, and then have to be supervised or have the supervisors penalize me every year because of what I did. If that happens, we're through. Guarantee you, I'm through.
Yeah.
And guarantee you, you're going to lose a lot more money than what you're gaining.
Yeah.
Guarantee it, because I went in and talked to the supervisor, I went to the assessor, not the assessor, but the...
Tax collector.
The lady that runs that, and she explained that anything we sell will not be taxed as the trust. If the kids sell it, they own it, they own everything. That's where you don't quite understand. The kids own everything, they will sell it after we die, and they get the new tax rate. There's no tax, basically, because they get the new rate.
Two different, two different situations totally.
Pardon?
That's two different total situations.
Oh, it's not. I guarantee you, I paid over twenty grand to get that ready to build, to give to, basically for, only for the hospital. I wouldn't have done it for anybody else.
Right.
All right? And, and then I can't even talk to the assessor, I don't agree with you, you've got people in the county that don't agree with you. I mean, that run their department. So I don't agree with what you're saying. And that's the answer. If you are going to try to screw me, then I'm through.
I, I...
And I've already mentioned, that's not, not what you do to a developer. We have the nicest development you could have in this part of the country. And I have spent years doing it, and I love living here.
Yeah.
But I don't like to be screwed.
Yeah. And, and we like having you here, I don't, I don't want to take away from that, we appreciate what you've been doing. All, all we can deal with is the facts that we have in front of us, and I don't know that we have a lot of options. Go ahead.
No. Yeah, and I do hear what you're saying, and I, I'm sorry that a good thing turned into a bad thing for you, but for us here, sitting here, all we have before us is this deed, and that's what we have to make our decision on. Has nothing to do with, I, I think you had, you tried to do a very good thing, but we can't act contrary to what's before us to act, and that is what the deed states. The deed doesn't say it's the trust, but I understand your argument for the trust, because that's what's going to happen to all of your property. But your land, the deed would have to say it's the trust. So unfortunately, we can't make a decision outside of what's before us in the decision, and what's before us is this deed. So I'm, I, you know, I'm sorry for that.
Is there anything else?
I just would like to say that I kind of disagree. If it was just as easy as looking at the deed and, and making a decision based on the letter of the law, there would be no Board of Equalization. There wouldn't be no hearing here. What I see on the latest deed is a, a grant from Sierra F-18 Limited Partnership to Cappy and Judith as community property with rights of survivorship, and that tells me that it's still in the trust. And, and, and I can't, I, I realize under the, the letter of the law and, and how it's worded, yes, by statute, we could assess him at the higher rate. I think that's totally unfair. And I, it's still within their family, it hasn't been developed, it wasn't refinanced. I mean, I, in years past, I've refinanced my house, it stayed in my trust, but I refinanced it. So that didn't happen here, you know, I was then assessed that it'd get a higher, higher rate. That didn't happen here. There, there was no new financing. It, it stayed in the trust, it wasn't developed, wasn't sold, wasn't given to any other outside entity, it, it stayed within the family. I think it's just completely unfair to, to assess him at the new rate when he truly, in effect, did not transfer ownership or develop the property.
Well, it's not that I, not that I disagree with you on, on that part of it, but the trust is a different document than a deed. And we're dealing with the deeds, we're not dealing with the trust. That if the, if the deed was in the trust, there would be no, there would be no reason that we are here. I agree with you. And I think it is as simple as what's on the deed, to me.
The deed was in the trust.
In the trust, you're talking about the deed being in the trust, I'm talking about the trust being on the deed.
But...
But you can put anything in that trust or take anything out of that trust at any time that you want. The deed is a different deal. In order to change the deed, you have to physically change the deed and sign it off to a different entity. Mr. Howard.
But I...
Did you have a second?
No.
Come on up, Bradley.
Yes.
Yeah, because... So I just wanted to reiterate, it's not that we don't agree with the feelings involved, right? That, you know, didn't change owner, you know, there's no physical, you know, people changing, right? It's in the families, there's no money, but this is California revenue taxation code. It's, I mean, in all, in my opinion, it's pretty black and white. The codes states has to be proportional interest transfer, and it's not in the trust. As of right now, if they were to pass, this would have to go to probate, because it's not in the trust. So, I mean, it's, it's pretty cut and dry in our opinion.
That's the difference between the deed not being in the trust, and that piece of property might even be listed on the trust, doesn't mean that it's not going to have to go through probate.
Exactly. So at this, at this point, it would go to court, go to probate, be given, you know, probably per what the trust states, but when it comes to law...
Counsel, do you want to weigh in on this, or no?
I'm understanding that.
I understand it.
Not really.
I mean...
I, I think that, you know, I don't know the ownership of the, the limited partnership. Sometimes they call it a general partnership, those are pretty different. What the trust ownership of that was is unclear, but it does look like it went from an entity that had more than just two owners, two, just two owners. That's what it looks like to me. And it is the applicant's burden of proof, so I would say, I think...
Can I ask Joel a question? So on that deed, though, it says, when, I see that it's very clear, it goes from Sierra F-18 to the Cappy Dobbs and Judith Dobbs' husband and wife, but underneath it, when the signature page, it's Sierra F-18 Limited Partnership, and they signed it as the manager of that. That, that to me is confusing, so I, I feel as if that is still, they're still representing themselves as this partnership.
Yeah, I mean, it's all a little bit confusing, I think.
Right, exactly.
And, I mean, the board can continue and ask for further briefing, he mentioned having a lawyer explain the trust. From what I've seen in the trust, there's a schedule that's not included of what's actually owned, but my understanding, and I'm not a wills and trusts attorney...
Right.
Is that you would put the deed in the name of the trust, not in the name of the two individuals.
That's correct.
And if I could interject, there is a stamp right on that that says, this conveyance changes the manner in which the title is held. Granters and grantees remain the same and continue to hold the same proportional interest. Says that right on the deed as well.
Yeah.
So there's also the document signed by Dobbs saying who owns Sierra F-18, and that, and so that is, and that was, I believe, Exhibit E.
I think it's C.
Or C, sorry. It might have cut off a little bit on there, but it's affidavit of members and partners. And this is, shows written, written by Cappy Dobbs, signed by Cappy Dobbs on nine eighteen seventeen or eight eighteen seventeen, saying who owns Sierra F-18 Limited Partnership. And they transferred it from that to fifty, fifty, you know, to just them two.
And just, just to clarify, this, this transfer was from their LLC to Judith and Cappy Dobbs, so they would be the ones signing the deed over to them.
Yeah, they're, they're the same people, I mean...
But I mean, they're the ones that are signing it over, so that's why it would say that.
Yeah. I, you know, I, when I was stating that, that, that's the facts, but there, there's also, it hasn't changed, the, the individuals are the same. The individuals are clearly the same in ownership, and so that piece of it...
But they're not the same owners.
Well...
I mean, it's going from a...
We understand.
Yeah, we understand.
But we're talking R and T code and not just, this is not how property transfers work.
I understand all that. I understand what the deed says, and that's why I clarified, that's the deed, and that's what we're looking at.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
But I have to, I have to agree with Supervisor Short, that there really hasn't been a change in the ownership. I mean, the individuals are the same individuals that were in the eighteen as, as in the individual. I mean, those individuals are the same people.
This is also for property tax purposes.
Mm-hmm.
It's not for what you can and can't do with your property.
Right.
It's not for who, you know, who's the owner, you know, me.
Right, understand that.
This is for property tax and reassessment purposes.
Totally understand.
And that's where all the R and T codes and, you know, that I gave you, tell you what to do in this situation.
Yeah.
So...
That's what I was saying, is, is if Mr. Dobbs took out that loan and improved the property, then yeah, we would be perfectly, I think, in all fairness, to, you know, have the property reassessed, but that didn't happen. And it, it didn't change hands, property wasn't developed. That's kind of why I gave my personal example, you know, if I refinance my house and sink the, the excess money into improvements in the house, then I basically re, you know, deserve a reassessment. But I don't think that's the case here. I, I just think that the, that it's completely unfair. Yes, I understand, I understand, Mrs. Dobbs, that, that it wasn't ever refinanced, the loan never was...
So if it, if it was transferred out of Sierra F-18 back to the four individuals or the four ownership, that would have resulted in a change of ownership, because it would have been in and out the same ownership percentage. I mean, if this was all LLCs that owned all four percentage, and then that went out, it's like, well, you know, we owned these two LLCs, but the other, you know, who, who knows who owns Alcoran, and then you have the other two owners, you know?
I'm understanding what you're saying.
So it's like, that's not proportional.
And that's what I was talking about, the letter of the law.
It's just the letter of the law, it's not what's, you know, I mean, it's just what the law states.
I'm understanding your position, yeah.
I find this interesting, that this young man, who probably is younger than mine...
Okay, doesn't talk in the mic.
You need to come over and talk into the mic, please.
He is not hearing what, his, his whole total purpose is to tax you all, to change you all, to change you all, okay? His whole total purpose, not to hear the purpose of what he did, okay? He was told that if we do for Sutter Coast, we have to do it as individuals. We had to do it as individuals, okay? It was not a matter of using our Sierra F-18 that started in nineteen seventy-four. It was not a matter of even consideration for the bank. It was a matter, and that guy, that guy is definitely looking out for your salaries, everybody else's salaries that gets paid by the government, I guess, because it's not going to kill us, but it's not fair. It's when he said, sure, Eugene, I'll help the, I'll help you at the Sutter Coast, and I'll help the county, I'll help the people who need doctors, I'll help. So he made an effort, with us paying for all those efforts, he made an effort to do something for Del Norte, because he felt Del Norte had done something for him by him even being here. He loved it. Nah, I didn't, okay? So I'm the bad guy always in all this, but, because I had an oceanfront in Newport Beach, I didn't want to come up here, okay? So, but I'm here, and he's a different guy than I am. I'm black and white, he's gray, and he wanted to do that for that. So if that guy thinks that he's going to, who is so young, that's his interpretation, because our interpretation of the same paper that he read was not what he said. So if you take his interpretation, somebody just said to me, you should sue the county, sue the assessors, ah, it's not worth it. It's not worth it. But, but I hope anyone in here can see that if you think you're doing a good, good thing, that you better check with him first, right? Better check with you. You're not the assessor, but better check with that one.
Well, and I don't, I don't want to make him the bad guy, because he's following...
He is the bad guy.
He's following the law, and that's what we hire him for.
Well, but we were too, we were too.
That's what we hire him for.
Our interpretation, and we had an attorney write it all up. So that, that, that's an interpretation, okay?
Yeah, I, I, I don't know, that's, that's a stretch for me. I understand the good that you were, that you were trying to do, and you made choices...
Okay, okay. I personally have used all the time I want to use on this, but it's, I, I hope the people in the rail, the county realize, realized what he was trying to do, that guy was trying to do for the county, okay? Because we heard all kinds of horrible things, we're not going to have doctors, the doctors are leaving, please help us, and he did it. So...
Okay. So what's the pleasure of the board? Anything you want to...
Can I just say one thing, is that allowed?
I don't think so, sorry.
Oh, okay.
No public comment, no.
I guess you're looking for a motion, Mr. Chairman?
Possibly, or we can go into deliberation, we can do whichever you like.
I'd like to make a motion that we grant his appeal and revert the opinion of, or revert the value back to the previous amount. revert the value back to the previous amount. I'm assuming that's correctly stated at $11,826.
You want to uphold the appellate's position?
Yes.
I'd second that motion, so we can get to further discussion on this.
Further discussion?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just still very confused. I understand the spirit of the law, the letter of the law, but, but in this, this deed, this deed, I would want more information, because it says the documented transfer taxes in A, and then it says the conveyance charge, the manner in which the title was held, grantor and grantee remained the same, and continued to hold the same proportionate interest. That, that to me is saying nothing's changed. It's signed by the Sierra F-18 Limited Partnership as Judy Dobbs' manager, Cappy Dobbs' manager. So for me, I, I would need more legal opinion as to this grant deed, if anything changed. It doesn't appear to me, so that's me.
Well, we're only supposed to act on the evidence that's presented, so.
You can, though, ask for more evidence and continue the matter if you want. It's an option.
We have a motion and a second on the floor.
Well, I'd pull my motion if we're going to continue to seek additional evidence.
Okay, if that's.
Unless you want to close this, you're done now.
I don't know what more evidence I need to see. I'm curious to see what specific evidence somebody would want to see.
Then I'll let my motion stand.
At the assessor's office, I would like to know what evidence you have to favor to revert, to change the reassessment, and what R and T codes you're stating to revert that, because of all the codes.
I'm, I'm fully understanding your position, and you're holding us, you're presenting the letter of the law. Yes, I understand that, that the wording on the deeds changed. I get where, what your position is, and you're, I get that you're correct in that by the letter of the law, this tax rate should change. I get that. I just believe that it's not fair, and as a Board of Equalization, we have the power to.
I think you have to refer to taxation.
Right. And so we have to have findings, right?
I don't know if the findings were actually asked for, the written findings? I don't think they were, I didn't see a box checked. I mean, if you do what you think is right, and it's not the letter of the law, then maybe the assessor files a writ of mandate, I don't know. I think we're talking about like 400 bucks a year either way here. So, you know, what happens next, doesn't seem like it's going to be worth it to anybody. Like, you're probably going to, your decision's probably going to stand whatever you do.
Okay, so if, if the assessor's office doesn't agree with what we did, they can take it to the higher, they can take it up the chain?
I think so. The applicant can. I've never looked at what, I've never heard of the assessor ridding the Board of Equalization that's not an appeals board. It'd be a novel situation for the county. Yeah, and I'm kind of sitting here with Darren right now, and there's a reason I seconded it, because I have seen what the Dobbs family has done for this community over time. I have seen the efforts that they've made towards the hospital. I remember when Eugene Sersky was here asking for the help. I was on the recruitment team through the Chamber of Commerce to get doctors here. I appreciate the efforts that you guys have gone through, and there's a reason I made the second here. And if there's ability to have some fairness, because somebody here at the county or somewhere told them that in order to get a building permit, this had to change, I mean, it's a very complicated mess to me.
This had to do with the loan, I think, but anyway.
Well, you're correct.
You're interjecting information that's not relevant to the.
Well, I believe it's, I believe it's relevant to a fair argument.
Well, to, to the fairness, I, I don't disagree.
Okay.
And I don't, I don't agree that it's a fair thing, but I think we're supposed to uphold what the assessors, what the, what the evidence shows, and whether it's legal on that basis, on whether it should be agreed or not agreed. Now, I, I, I don't disagree that the, I mean, with everything that's on the documents where it says the ownership doesn't change, but that leads me to think, why did they have to change it if nothing changed? Something had to change in order for it to go where it went. Otherwise, why would you change it? If everything was the same.
Somebody advised them poorly, maybe, I don't know. It's complicated.
Well, it was a requirement, I think, of the bank, or whoever said, you need to change this to this. So if it wasn't changing any kind of ownership, any kind of legal ownership, why would you change it if it didn't change anything? That's my whole argument on it. The fairness deal, I can go along with.
You're not a builder, you're not a developer, I respect what you do, you're saying you don't want to change it.
I think you have to use some mic.
That's all these hours not to be billed, and so, the bank said you can have a construction loan. Why would he question that? Why would he question, can't have a construction loan as a partner, but not to, first of all, purchase a loan?
With the formal hearing, does, does she have to speak in the mic?
For the sake of the record, anything that's set that far back might not make it.
If you're going to, if you want to speak and, and give us more evidence, then you need to come up to the microphone.
Well, if it's not going to make you pay much, then I guess I'm wasting my time, but I'm just saying.
Well, you're saying that I.
No, you have this.
Okay, so you want to come back up in there, I will.
Yeah. Well, you're indicating that I don't understand, and I think I do understand. I understand all sides of it. The thing that is confusing to me, I'm going to say confusing, because I don't, I, it's not that I don't understand, but if everything is the same, if nothing changed on that, on the ownership, why would somebody require you to change the deed if it doesn't change anything? And so it had to be changed, so therefore there's a change, so you can't, you can't tell me that something didn't change when it changed, because otherwise you wouldn't have to change.
First of all, I have never been asked by the federal government to work on banking laws. When the banking law said, you cannot do this without it being in a, in a partnership, that it has to be in your name, even though the partnership belongs to you, that's, no one has ever asked either one of us about banking laws. So we have to, if, if I go in and I want something, but I say, but I don't want to pay that much, no one's asked me about that, okay? So you either follow, or you back out. He didn't want to back out from what he had told Eugene he would do, what he had told Sutter, Sutter Coast he could do.
I, I, I understand the goodness part of it.
But you don't, evidently.
I do.
Because you keep saying the same thing, over. You're not, you're not looking at it as if you're saying it that you have to, to disagree or agree or something.
I'm going to dis.
We didn't agree with that. I didn't want to sign that bank loan, okay? I didn't agree with that, but to get to do that for Sutter Coast, and for the, the good of the county.
Yeah.
The guy was saying he was losing doctors.
And, and I appreciate that.
We agreed to do it.
And, and, you know, and what I'm saying doesn't necessarily decide what my ruling is. I'm just going over what I think are the facts, and I have known LLCs that have gotten loans before, so why this couldn't happen here is beyond me. I'm not trying to get into that too much. But the deed changed, and the deed changed in a way that was not proportional according to what, what the county assessor's having. It's not proportional, it's not the same.
Well, since the county assessor.
Even though all the signees were the same, and, but it says on there, you're taking this and you're putting into this. If it didn't have to change, if it was exactly the same, why did you have to change anything? And I can say the bank.
Because the bank said you couldn't get the construction loan.
I would have got another bank, I think, but anyway, I'm not trying to go into what you did and what you didn't do. I'm just saying that the deed had to change. You had to change the deed in order to get the loan, so something changed, and proportionally, that did not happen.
And it didn't change because we own both.
Okay.
It didn't change.
We're going around in circles.
We are.
I, I, if, if it is like Joel said, and we're, we're chasing $400 of a property assessment when the Dobbs arguably have, have contributed more to development in this county of high-end properties overlooking the ocean, have brought significant resources and dollars into our property tax revenues, I'm, I'm, I'm confused. I am, I'm really confused, and again, I still have a motion on the table.
Yeah, and you're making me more confused, because I don't think we should necessarily tax people on their contribution.
We're the Board of Equalization, we're here to listen to the arguments.
Yeah.
We have the assessor's office presenting his tax code, and we have the appellate presenting his, his side of the argument on how it occurred. I'm trying to weigh all those factors in. If there's room, if there's gray, I'd love to hear it. And if we don't know if there's gray in there, if we don't know if there's gray in here, then let's bring the folks in that help us to understand it. If county council doesn't have the ability to understand it, or the assessor.
If you would like, if you would like to move, table this, or, I don't know whether that's a proper term, but.
Continue it.
Continue it. If you want to continue this, then that's the direction that you may want to take it. Or we can go to a vote.
I just, I mean, the reason I made the motion was because the, the code cannot cover every situation, every nuance, as it applies to everybody. I truly believe that that's why there is a board to hear the arguments and weigh the, the law against the fairness and how it's applied.
Okay, this.
That's, that's what drove the motion.
The intent, if the intent was, can we, can the, can it be changed back to Sierra F-18?
I, I.
Because that went away, the intent is a good portion of the law.
Well, yeah, I think you, I think you can change it back, but I don't know.
And you know what? The amount of money is not, that we're being assessed, is not that big of a deal at all. It was the, it was the idea that he, okay, well.
Understand. Is there a problem with continuing this and getting more information, getting more evidence, or do you want to bring it to a vote?
Oh.
That's up to you, you're the second.
I am the second.
Okay, so do you want to vote on the motion, then?
Darren, are you ready to move forward? Or do you want to hear more arguments?
I don't know what else I could hear, or what we could bring to the board. I can't think of anything specifically that I would ask for.
I'm going to leave my motion to stand.
Charlie Paul, vote please.
Supervisor Mastin?
We're, now I'm confused, we're voting for or against.
If you vote yes, then we are upholding the appeal. We're voting in Mr. Dobbs, Mr. and Mrs. Dobbs' favor.
I vote yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
No.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
No. Okay, so that passes, you're up. The appellate wins this particular battle?
Yeah.
Okay. Good to go.
Okay, let me just say, he seems like he's simple-minded, but he can't hear, he has hearing aids, so.
Not an issue.
I.
Yeah, I, I don't think he's simple-minded at all, I, I, okay.
So why? I, what?
You guys win.
I, what?
You're in. Okay. All right, we'll move on to our, oh, wait a minute, we're going to take a five-minute break.
Yes, thank you.[1437.82]
Welcome back. We are going to continue as the Board of Equalization. And we're going to go to an 11 o'clock time item, and we're about an hour behind, which is another public hearing for the assessment of the Dollar General Store, APN 103-080-064. Is the appellate here?
Chair, I received no confirmation from the appellate that they were going to attend, but we had to be within the, within the two-year window for the application. And.
But we have confirmation that he was served with the.
Yes, correct. He was, they were notified well within the 45-day notice.
Okay. So in that case, we take no action, and that is not going to be considered. Okay, moving on. We're going to adjourn as the Board of Equalization, reconvene as the Board of Supervisors, and discuss recommendations for Delnort County's indigent defense system. Laurel, welcome. Thank you for coming back.
Thank you.
And I should say, this is Laurel Leroya from the, she's the Director of Capacity Building for Indigent Defense Improvement Division of the Office of the State Public Defenders. Wow, that's quite a title.
Yes, it's a little long. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak today. I really appreciate it. I'm here to speak to you about the opportunity to transform your indigent defense system and what that might do in terms of improving your community. I'm here because your county officials invited me in to do evaluation of your indigent defense system. And I wrote a report based on interviews with county stakeholders and criminal justice research for your county. And I have provided copies for everybody today, and there's some extra copies over here. My recommendation is that this county create an institutional public defender's office similar to your district attorney's office, and that will increase the capacity for defenders to provide high-quality indigent defense. Today's presentation will be approximately 10 minutes, and I will go over the county's legal obligations to fund public defense, some of the challenges in your current system, and how this presents an opportunity and a roadmap for change. Counties are required to provide indigent defense services at an effective level, and that's guaranteed by the Sixth Amendment right to counsel and the Fourteenth Amendment due process and equal protection rights. That obligation has been delegated to the counties under 987.2 of the Penal Code and Government Code 27700 grants the ability of the Board of Supervisors to establish a public defender's office to meet that constitutional obligation. Courts have reinforced this obligation. In fact, the unit that I work for was established in 2020 by the Governor's Office in response to a lawsuit out of Fresno County regarding their indigent defense. So what are the different models for indigent defense in California? There is the public defender's office model, which is what I'm recommending for your county. Some of your nearest neighbors, Siskiyou and Humboldt, have public defender offices. There are other small counties in the state which also have public defender offices, and those are Nevada, Tuolumne, among other counties. There's another option, which is the panel system or managed assigned counsel system, where a limited amount of county employees manage a larger panel of private attorneys. And there are examples such as San Mateo and San Luis Obispo. And then there's a third system, which is the contract system, which is what you have. And the contract system that you have currently is four contract criminal attorneys, and they each work for themselves. They contract with the county to handle the cases involving criminal, youth delinquency, and conservatorships. In addition, because you have a prison in your county, you have two additional Pelican Bay attorneys who are reimbursed by the state for defending people charged with crimes in the prison. So what is happening in Delnort County? Now, the report goes into it in detail, but I'm going to touch on some of the highlights from the report, and there are citations to some of the pages in my presentation. So what are some of the concerns that people noticed when I interviewed them, and also some of the concerns from this criminal justice statistics that could be ameliorated by a public defender? The first one is that the highest rate of jail admissions is in Delnort County. So Delnort County is admitting more people to its jail than any of the 58 counties in California. In addition, your rate of women's incarceration is three times higher than the state average. When you look at the percentage of people going to jail and prison from this county combined, the rate is the third highest in the state. Now, some might think that's just because we have more crime here in Delnort County. But when you look at the violent crime rate for the county, it is actually lower than the state average. Delnort County is also disproportionately incarcerating Native people. Although Native people present approximately 7% of your population, they make up 22% of your jail, and that could be an undercount. And it's been that way since 1995 or before. Native people are also being disproportionately sent to prison. The green represents, the larger graph on the left is the Toluwai D Nation. The green on the right represents the Urok Reservation, and the blue represents the state average for people being sent to prison. So to group the concerns in the report into three broad categories, the first is a lack of accountability and consistency among your defense bar. There are no standards, there is no oversight, and there is no training. And so what you're risking as a county is constitutionally defective representation, and you may not even know it. Another issue is clients cannot get a hold of their attorneys. There is no office, there is no support staff answering the phones. The attorneys are running around from court to jail, and they are not necessarily available to their clients. And another issue is there's no boss to call. When an attorney doesn't show up to court, when somebody's not doing an excellent job, there's nobody to call. The only blunt tool that the county has is terminating the contract. The second broad category is a lack of coordination of services for people in jail. A lot of the people that I interviewed in this county were concerned with multiple things regarding the jail. And so to highlight, oops, sorry about that, to highlight some of the issues in terms of the lack of coordination for the jail, there are people cycling in and out of jail without getting their needs identified. There's less jail space for people who've committed violent offenses. And there's a lack of a defense voice at county stakeholder meetings to coordinate solutions. You're also sitting on a retention, a recruitment problem. There's no formal coverage for attorneys when they're sick, because everybody works for themselves. There's no coverage for attorneys when they're on vacation. And there's no formal incentive to stay with the defense because there's no benefits. So why is this a priority? This is a priority because it's not an academic problem. The people enmeshed in your system are your neighbors, they're your former classmates, they're your friends' children. It's really important that, as county leaders, that you provide them with better opportunities for success, or at least give them a fair fight before locking them up. At the last board meeting, Supervisor Mastin framed the juvenile hall closure as an opportunity. This, too, is a tremendous opportunity for your community to really get it right, to provide better opportunities for your constituents. Delnort is in a strong position to be a statewide leader for small rural counties. So we've talked about some of the concerns. Let's briefly address why a public defender's office would be a strong solution for some of these concerns. In terms of the lack of accountability and consistency among the attorneys, a chief defender could set and enforce standards. An office with support staff could ensure client communication. And a team of lawyers could together provide constitutionally effective services. In terms of coordinating services for people in the jail, a defender office could coordinate with other divisions and the tribes to formulate solutions. For example, you have a lot of new laws coming up the pike. DJJ is closing, CARES Court is coming, and having a defense voice to coordinate solutions for these new laws would be important. A defense voice could also coordinate services for people with mental illness, such as your incompetent-to-stand trial that are sitting in your jail. A defense voice could address the revolving door. And a defense voice could be a sightline for the Board of Supervisors into problems at the jail as they're happening in real time, so that the Board of Supervisors is advised when things are happening. In terms of attracting new attorneys, I know that all of your departments have issues of recruitment, and all small counties really frankly have issues of recruitment for attorneys. But if you want to put yourself in the best position to have a fighting chance to attract new attorneys, you'll want to have a pipeline of interns from law schools. You'll want to have attorneys that are getting benefits, a retirement, that they have coverage for sick days, they have coverage for vacation, they have a team to work with, and they'll have access to federal loan forgiveness for their law school loans. That's only available when you're a county employee. And we know that a structured office with good leadership really is the best way to attract attorneys, because we have several examples in your community. So this list represents all of the active lawyers you have in your county. There are 49 active lawyers. And as you can see, marked in yellow are all the attorneys that work for the Urok Tribe. And so what we see from that is a structured office with good leadership, like Judge Abbey, equals the ability to recruit lawyers. We have other good examples in your community of a structured office with your district attorney's office. Katie Mix is a strong leader, and she's been able to attract attorneys to work in this county. Your county council as well, with Joel Campbell Blair, he's been able to attract and retain strong lawyers. So your current system is four contract attorneys. What would a public defender's office look like? You would need a chief defender, four attorneys, a support staff to answer the phone and make files, a support staff to do filings and legal work, and an investigator. Many offices also have a social worker that works on reducing recidivism. You would also have the option to add four, add the two Pelican Bay attorneys into the office to defray costs. Marin County, Imperial County, and also your DA's office all embed the attorneys into the offices so that they can defray costs for the investigators and the support staff. So how do we know how many attorneys we need in your county? Well, I looked at the criminal court filings from the judicial council, and it appears that you have approximately 400 felonies charged per year and 800 misdemeanors charged per year, plus juvenile cases and conservatorships. When you look at the national caseload standards, an attorney should not represent more than 150 clients charged with felonies per year, and no more than 400 misdemeanor clients per year. And so what that equals out to in your county is one chief attorney with a reduced caseload, two felony attorneys with 150 each, two misdemeanor attorneys with 400 each, and then the juvenile cases and conservatorships would have to be assigned to one of those attorneys or divided among them. So how are you going to pay for this? That's a big question. When you look at the funding choices that your county is making with regards to public safety, this is the net cost or just the amount that's being paid out of the county's general fund. And you look and you see that the top line is the indigent defense budget, and it's the least funded of the, of the arms of the public safety. Yet, it's the only one that this county is constitutionally mandated to provide. The district attorney is funded at a rate more than double the rate of the indigent defense. The juvenile hall is funded at a rate more than double. Probation is funded at a rate more than double. The jail is funded at six times the rate of the indigent defense budget, and the sheriff is funded at a rate four times the rate of the indigent defense budget. But it doesn't just have to be paid out of the general fund. You are already devoting $700,000 towards indigent defense. You could also use other sources to pay for a public defender's office. If you hire a chief, the chief can be your local expert on seeking out additional funding sources, such as state and federal grants that are available to public defender offices. You could also equalize your realignment money from AB 109. If Measure R should pass, you could use that for some of the vital services. Biden has rolled out a Safer America Plan, which envisions using this for defense. The COVID American Rescue Act money could be used to fund a one-time transition plan, such as the computers or the lease. And you could roll the Pelican Bay defenders in to use the state reimbursement funding to pay for an investigator or support staff. So my recommendation is that this county seriously consider opening a public defender's office to meet all the needs. And I would invite you to read the report carefully if you haven't had a chance yet, because I really kind of touched on the high-level things here today. But my request is that the board direct staff to create a sample public defender budget and a six-to-12-month transition plan in consultation with the Office of the State Public Defender, and place this item on the December 13th agenda for a vote. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any questions from board members?
No, Laurel and I have had lots of conversations. So she's answered all my questions previously, but I am in support of making that recommendation. So I would like to do that at this time.
Anything else?
So I think it's quite alarming what you've learned. It's not surprising. It's what we have suspected but didn't have data to actually show. And I think it's unacceptable for us to be in this position. So I have to agree with Supervisor Starkey in that I feel like we should take measures to take a look at this and direct staff to develop a proposed budget for consideration.
Any questions?
You presented three models. I'd like you to explore the middle one, if you could, please, so I can better understand it.
Okay. Right now or just with your staff?
No, right now.
Okay. So there's a managed-assigned counsel system, which some counties use, where you have, sometimes it's an attorney, usually an attorney, that manages private attorneys in the community. And sometimes the managed-assigned councils also have an embedded investigator, access to experts, training, and they will basically act as a supervisor to the attorneys who are on private contract in the community. Now, there are some advantages to that, because you don't have to pay for the county salaries of all of the private attorneys. But there are some disadvantages. And so some of the disadvantages are that you don't have as much control over your attorneys. So let's say you have private attorneys who are spending most of their time on their private cases. They are disincentivized to spend adequate and equal time on their indigent defense caseload because they're essentially moonlighting on the side. And so when you have county employees, you have an obligation to only work on indigent defense cases. And so everybody gets all of your time. There's no financial disincentive to give paying clients better services than non-paying clients. So that would be one disadvantage. But there are advantages. It's worth exploring for the county. But I, I do think that, given the depth of the problems here, you might want to start with having everybody in the same office, working on the same team, sharing motions, sharing training, being internally supervised by one strong leader to make sure that you have both the ability to recruit in the future, but also, you know, a team that can train each other and make sure that everybody rises.
And I guess the plan, if, if the motion upholds and the board votes for it, there's state funding to explore the development of this plan, or are we just funding this out of general fund?
You would fund it out of the general fund and grants. There are some grants that you could use, such as Burn Jag. You could use the Public Defender Pilot Grant. But in terms of the funding structure, it would have to come from the county.
Okay, that's all I have for now, Jerry.
Yeah, I, I, I like the, the whole idea, the concept. It sounds good. But you, you mentioned some other counties that had a public defender's office. And I'm just picking out Humboldt and Siskiyou County who have one and are not that far behind us in incarceration numbers. So I'm just curious to find out, I guess, you know, this is a numbers game, and we're dealing with a numbers game, and we're trying to either reduce or increase, depending on where you're coming from. So is there, is there room for us? I don't want to say get banged for a buck, but we're wanting to be more efficient, and we're wanting accountability. And I understand all that. And that can be done through the public defender's office. But in what I'm seeing here in the numbers is a little disappointing. I would expect those people, those counties, the smaller counties, rural counties, these are rural counties, Humboldt and Siskiyou County, that their numbers would be much lower because they have a public defender's office. So that concerns me a little bit. But, but I am in favor of looking into it, checking it out, see what we can do out of it. Anything else?
No, included in that, though, if we could hear from our local attorneys. So if, when we.
So when we give that kind of direction, if we could hear from our current contracted attorneys, I'd love to make sure that their voices are heard.
I think some are prepared to give public comment today, just to give the board.
Also, I think we did have a public defender's office in the past. And it dissolved for some reason.
We did. I know, because we, at one point, did have a county code ordinance establishing one, and then it was amended to turn into just contract attorneys. I'm not sure how long ago that was, but we did, yes.
I'd be curious to find out why that was dissolved, what was problematic with that.
Okay. No more questions for Laurel?
No, it's an interesting concept. And obviously, what we're trying to do, some of the discussion we'll have later today on juvenile halls, basically create an environment where the attorneys have more time to focus on their clients and potentially divert them out of the system so they could seek appropriate help, right? I mean, that's what we're trying to do, is keep people out of the jails so they could reintegrate into society and become useful members. Obviously, what we're doing now isn't working. And as Supervisor Hemmingson is pointing out, it isn't working for counties that potentially are neighbors of ours and still have this high incarceration rate. And I honestly don't know what the solution is. It seems to be an interesting balancing act. But what I do know is that we do have a mental health crisis here in our county. We do have it disproportionately among youth and Native American populations. And so if there's a way we could explore this further through the conversation, I'm all for it.
Yeah, I agree. I don't have issue with that. Without taking away, I mean, we want to reduce crime and reduce recidivism. So, I mean, those would be the things that I would hope to get out of this. Anything else from board members? Laurel, thanks. I'm going to take public comment on your presentation.
Thank you.
Any public comment on this presentation?
I just can't resist an opportunity to illustrate the poor job you guys are doing. Really, the third-highest rate for jail and prison combined. The highest jail admission rate in California. I find it ironic that government is proposing to solve their problems and failures by introducing more government. Yeah, a solution does need to happen. Need to start with our youth and our education system. How the rec department has taken away all the services from kids here recently. How we don't have a YMCA. What do you expect to happen? Just keep taxing your citizens more? You know, a quarter of our population is already in poverty. But now, we're going to help on the back end? Everyone is entitled to a fair trial when they mess up, and hopefully, we give them opportunities to get better. But your policy is leading to the disastrous consequences we're seeing. Yes, Auntie New.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Hi, Kwee. Neck Now, Joanne Carter. I am an attorney with the UROC Tribal Court. I manage the UROC Youth Wellness Court Program and UROC Education Diversion Program. Prior to my work for the UROC tribe, I worked as a deputy conflict counsel and deputy public defender for the Humboldt County Public Defender's Office for eighteen years. I strongly support the position of the Office of the State Public Defender regarding the creation of a public defender's office in Del Norte County. In an effort to persuade this board, I want to tell you about my eighteen years as a public defender. Within my first week as a public defender, after having applied to every county in the state because I cared that much about being a public defender, I received the offer from Humboldt County and accepted. I settled in quickly, and within my first week of employment, I had my first jury trial. I lost, but I learned. And within my first year of employment, I had fifteen misdemeanor jury trials. I kept learning. I worked with an excellent supervisor who taught me. His door was always open to us. We asked so many questions, and we all shared so many ideas. We had secretaries who answered the phone and scheduled our client appointments. They reminded us about certain people who were in custody, who still were awaiting visits or maybe discovery. We had an investigator who discussed our cases with us. That same investigator would tell me often to stop kidding myself and work out a deal for my client. In other words, he gave me a reality check. In fact, we all did that for each other. My office had a protocol, a system we followed, from arraignment to plea or trial and on very rare occasions, dismissal. I met my client in court at arraignment. I made a point to say hello and give them my card so that at that very moment, that scary, overwhelming, unfamiliar moment, they knew who their attorney was, who their advocate was. If my client was in custody, I would get a date for a bail or OR hearing in two days, and I would go see my custody within that two-day period because my supervisor insisted that I do that. Right off the bat, my client knew who I was, and at that moment, I had established some level of trust and respect for not just me, but the process and the system as well. Ultimately, this respect benefited all of those involved in the case. Things moved along more smoothly as a result. I started my work as a public defender handling misdemeanor and dependency cases. Slowly but surely, I was given the opportunity to handle preliminary hearings and felony cases. After about five years, I had my first murder trial. My supervisor kept answering my questions, looking over my motions, my jury instructions, my cross-examination, and he took my many, many calls after hours as well. I picked a jury.
Wrap it up.
Okay. A strong public defender's office will benefit the UROC tribe, and I understand it's disjointed, the UROC tribe and its members. Our tribal court has grown significantly in just the short time I have been there. I have seen the commitment to our members through wellness and diversion courts. We are working to provide services to members through a number of programs with our amazing judges and committed personnel of the tribal court. We want to collaborate with attorneys defending native people in particular, both adults and youth, and one public defender's office will facilitate that collaboration.
Thank you.
Walk loud.
And you're hired if you're looking for a job.
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Hello, I'll keep this short. Karen Olson is my name. And for those of you that don't know, I am one of the four contracted public defenders here in Del Norte County. Ellie Hoops is also another one, and she's sitting back there trying to hide. Not sure if we're going to let her do that. But anyway, there was a lot that I wanted to say this morning, but since things have run quite a bit longer than I expected, I just want to say that despite even shooting myself in my own foot, I would support, and I do support, a creation of a public defender's office. Obviously, a private contractor through the county to provide those services benefits me financially. But I think for the good of the community, this is seriously something that the board supervisors should consider doing. I have talked to Joe Fittrell, Keith Morris, Ellie Hoops, and all of us are in support of at least looking into the idea of a traditional public defender's office, or even that second-tier, I don't know what it was called, something. But the way things are going now, and all the new programs, the mental health programs, the care program, four of us are not going to be able to sustain the public defender services that are needed in this county for much longer. So I would definitely encourage you to follow the recommendations of Laurel.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Good morning. I'm Ellie Hoops, and I'm also one of the public defenders that is on contract here. I deal specifically with misdemeanors and juvenile matters. I do come from a large system. Prior to coming here, I was a public defender in Colorado. It was a state public defender system. I would say within five years, I also had done twenty-five trials, including murder trials, so felony trials, I mean by that. We do start, we would meet every Saturday. Our weekends were entirely devoted to working as a team to prepare for trials. That is part of the system. One of the things that has happened while I've been here is I've learned that there's more to it than just that. We have a community that branches out across borders. We have tribes, we have other places. We have now the opportunity to do a lot of treatment here. I believe that Supervisor Howard just mentioned that. I think that creating a public defender system here is going to allow a lot of different minds to come into place. We are in a time of transition, and we do need to be able to have a STEM-alone agency that can meet the needs of what's going on with the jail, what's going on with the district attorney, what's going on in the courtroom, all of these different things, to have a voice at all of these tables. I also think, though, that we have a lot of partners here that we can be joining with, and that is the UROC tribe, that is the Talo Adini Nation. So we have places to look outside of just the grant money that's here. We have other places to look at funding that can be developing wellness groups and wellness programs that we have. So we can, in creating this public defender system, I think we can do something even beyond what is the traditional public defender that we are being told that is done in California. I think we need that agency, we need that sort of leadership to make that happen. But we here can create something that's really unique. I think that the structure of funding that we see before the board right now is concerning. The fact that there is a mandate to the board to be supporting public defense is really critical that that's not happening. I think that one of the reasons that we need proper public defense here is because we have a group of people that are not heard. This is one of the reasons that we have such a degree of unanswered mental health. This is why we have such a degree of unanswered juvenile issues, is because these people don't know who to talk to. If they speak to a probation officer, if they speak to a law enforcement officer, their voice isn't protected, it isn't actually being fully heard. They can't even necessarily talk. One of the bases of having a public defender system is you have someone who may have social workers, may have investigators, may have attorneys that can really delve into those issues and bring them to the forefront so that we can heal them. This isn't just to get people out of jail. This isn't just to get people so that they don't have to deal with ramifications. This is so that we can find out what's really going on, so that we can solve those issues. So that, first and foremost, I think, is critical. And then I do think that we do have a constitutional duty to make sure that we respect one another. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, see no other public comment then? By consensus, we'll have staff look into this situation? Yeah. Okay. You got that? Neil, you're on board? Okay, we're going to move on then to our eleven-thirty timed item. We're continually going backwards, but.
Good job, Darren.
Okay. Renell's got some staffing changes?
Yes, good afternoon, board.
Good afternoon.
I will try to make this brief, but give you an opportunity at the end to ask questions so I can expand on anything. Just wait for our presentation to pop up here. But so I'm Renell Brown, Director of Department of Health and Human Services. Our Assistant Director, C. Tao, had planned to be there and jointly present to you, but she was unable to attend today unexpectedly. She was really an integral part, as she has been upon my hire, in just making sure that I am up to speed on what took place in the strategic planning process and really taking the lead on continuing those efforts. So I just really wanted to thank her publicly for all of that. So today, we're going to be talking about an update on the organization restructure. So how did we get here? We gave you a presentation in August about our strategic plan update. Through the process, we discovered some overarching challenges and opportunities revolving around our organizational structure and wanted to share our plan and ideas for next steps with you. So as you can see, a layout today of our presentation is I'll briefly share the mission statement with you, give you an overview of Department of Health and Human Services, really look at initiatives and areas of focus that have happened over the past few years, as well as discuss funding and staffing changes, challenges and opportunities, and then really go over our current structure, as well as our recommendation for a future structure. So at the Department of Health and Human Services, the mission is of the Department of Health and Human Services to respectfully promote the health, safety, self-sufficiency, and well-being of children, families, and individuals, creating hope for the future. So that's why we do what we do. Our team makes decisions every day based on this mission statement, both for our internal and external customers. So the Department of Health and Human Services is made up of five branches. We have our Public Health Branch, Behavioral Health Branch, Public Assistance and Employment and Training, Social Services, and Fiscal and Administration. Within these branches, we have sixty-five employees under Public Assistance, twenty-seven under Public Health, forty-one under Behavioral Health, forty-two under Social Services, and twenty-six under Fiscal Administration, which gives us our total allocation of two-hundred-and-one full-time employees. So this is not all-encompassing of our programs, but this gives you an idea of what we're doing. Currently, under each of those branches, these are some of our programs, tasks, and activities. Some of them you may be familiar with, others you may not. But they all are taking on more efforts and more tasks that are needed by staff. And as we'll talk about, there's been more initiatives and programs that have been added over the years, that this list just continues to grow. So over the last twelve years, Department of Health and Human Services has been a part of many initiatives and areas of focus. The Affordable Care Act was a comprehensive healthcare reform law that was enacted in March 2010, which expanded more affordable health insurance for individuals on Medi-Cal or eligible for Medi-Cal. Then in October of 2015, I'm really putting this ahead there. Governor Brown signed legislation known as the Continuum of Care Reform, and this comprehensively reforms placement and treatment options for youth in foster care. Then we jump over to 2017, where we were faced with looming budget impacts with the In-Home Supportive Services Maintenance of Efforts legislation to increase the county's MOE. And in 2019, we merged our Mental Health and Alcohol and Other Drugs branches into the Behavioral Health Branch that you know today. In 2020, we were faced with a public health emergency, which is yet to officially end, and had to pivot in many directions all at once. During this time, we were also successful in applying for the Home Key Funds, which we used this opportunity to purchase a motel that we had historically been using for shelter placements for many of our clients for years. Now, in 2022, we are challenged with the implementation of CalAim, among other things, with the waiver renewal program and payment reform in Medi-Cal. So this is really going to change how we do Medi-Cal as far as in our community and statewide. So this is an example of our funding and staffing over the past seven years. We had an average increase of about eight percent in our budget over the last seven years. But we only had an average increase of less than one percent in our full-time equivalent staffing levels. And then you can see that dip in seventeen, eighteen, where due to budgetary challenges, our staffing went down. That was the same year as the MOE efforts. So through leadership observations and the staffing analysis during the strategic planning process, three main challenges were identified: recruitment and retention, gaps in leadership, operations and structure needs. So our recruitment and retention, which is not new to anybody, is we have high turnover, high vacancy rates, and the length of recruitment is our barriers to building up our team. Our gaps in leadership, strategic thinking and planning is needed, but this role is currently being filled by managers who have high demands on their time to manage their programs and are relatively new to their roles. Under operations and structure needs, there's a need to have a more centralized structure and process for sharing information across the department. The process also identified some opportunities for the department to make some significant impactful changes. We would like to strengthen the leadership team to provide better support to staff, focus on making changes that will result in improving the organizational culture, increase resources and reevaluate the use of existing funds and partnerships to focus on the current needs, and continue building relationships with our tribal and community partners. So due to the department's continued growth over the years, the management team has increased significantly. This has created a flat leadership structure. This has created a flat leadership structure and resulted in fifteen positions currently reporting to the Assistant Director. Some of this is due to four positions at the management level being vacant. So what we see for the future is another layer in the organization leadership structure. The managers are often stretched thin, trying to juggle multiple tasks in their programs. And by establishing that Deputy Director position, we feel that it will support each of the branches. There will be staff in place to assist the Director and Assistant Director with that long-term and strategic thinking. And it will allow the managers to then focus on the programs and their staff oversight. So in collaboration with the collective good, we analyze structures and information from other like-sized counties to determine what would work best for Delnort County. As you can see by this chart, most counties had a combination of Directors and Deputy Directors for the branches in their Health and Human Services departments. We worked within our current salary ranges to make the proposed recommendations for adding the Deputy Director level. And due to the current vacancies that I mentioned before, we plan to reclassify some of those vacant management positions to that Deputy Director classification. So what are our next steps? We plan to bring an action item to the Board at a future Board meeting to request to add these recommended positions. We plan to include a draft job description and resolution to support the new classification recommendations. And we plan to continue looking at the organizational structure at DHHS to make any further needed changes. Any questions?
Questions from Board members? Chris?
Thanks, Renell. That was a great presentation, a lot to digest. And I guess I want to start out with some appreciation for your department and all the changes that have happened over the last several years. I know you've gone through a lot personally, left the county, come back, and we appreciate that. We've needed leadership and guidance at your level. I've oftentimes thought about this in relationship to the size of DHHS. It's huge. It's our largest structure in the county. And I really want to try to get your perspective and opinion since returning. Is it too big for one Director to handle?
So I don't think so, but we need to build up a leadership structure to support that. I really value the integrated agency model. It really provides and allows for that collaboration between branches that might be siloed more if they were separate departments.
And so your belief, at least right now since returning home, is that potentially by the Board, I'm not saying we're going to do this, but it's just a thought I'm having, potentially by creating two Director-type positions within this larger department we call DHSS would potentially silo more of those departments to where they're not communicating, cross-collaborating, and potentially not coming up with good solutions to fix problems that the state essentially sends us money to fix.
Yeah, I think that that could happen. If you have one Director, they still have the ultimate authority over all of the branches and can help lead those conversations and those directions. By establishing a higher-level position in each of those branches, we feel that it'll provide an opportunity to look at those new initiatives that are coming down, potentially look at new implementation of programs, and really be those leaders and those experts in those branches. You know, it hasn't been a secret that employee development is really important to me, and I think this is a key integral part of that.
Anybody else? Yeah, Renell, the only thing that kind of sticks out to me, or I don't know if it sticks out or not, but Deputy Directors, I don't really have an issue with except for who, the number of people they oversee. Are we getting too top-heavy? I mean, we've got a lot of vacancies, it seems like, with the people with boots on the ground. And so if we create a Deputy and that takes away from one of those people that were boots on the ground, is it... You see where I'm going with this? I just think there could be an issue there. And I'm not saying that we don't need maybe some Deputy Directors, but I don't know maybe if we need that range of them. But you're still going to come up with a proposal that's going to come back to us at some point.
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, this is our plan, is to add the four Deputy positions. So I mentioned we have five branches, so Social Services, as far as, you know, the state model is that our Public Assistance and Social Services would be under that one Deputy because it's really aligned with what the state does. But we plan, I mean, that could happen, you know, definitely recruitment is an issue right now. And, but what we're finding is those managers aren't able to do that higher level of thinking that we need someone to do, a strategic person for each branch and for those programs. And so then those managers would be still the boots on the ground, and those Deputy positions would be vacant until filled. Potentially, it could mean one of those managers is moving up to a Deputy position, and then that management position would be filled. But it always creates that opportunity for growth within the agency.
Yeah, I mean, I do, I do like the idea of everybody working together and not having this siloed structure where everybody's on their own in their own little world, and that doesn't work for me.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
Does kind of spur a question for me. What is your management's span of control now? Is it like, I guess optimum span of control would be like three to five?
Right.
Under a manager? Do you have a?
Yeah, the manager's currently supervised probably about that, three to five supervisors. But as demonstrated in the chart, that the Assistant Director now supervises fifteen, and that's just not manageable, and we need to restructure that a bit.
Sure, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks, Renell, appreciate it. Any public comment on this presentation?
Good presentation, Renell, thank you. Interesting how government employees, or maybe the lobbyist that was here earlier, always have a very partial and biased opinion. And the information that she just provided, she gave staffing and funding for the last five years. But if you were to go back just a little bit further and consider ten years, according to your budget allocations, DHHS has increased by over fifty employees over the last ten years. The county has what, some thirty, forty departments? All these departments combined have only seen an increase in two. Two employees for all other departments, but yet DHHS has increased by more than fifty. And yet, what are we seeing for the consequences of that? And are we seeing benefits? No, we're seeing more mental health issues. We're seeing more crime. We're seeing more homelessness. To what? Have more salaries? Just be nice if we were given impartial information so you can decide.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Yeah, Paul Dillard from resident of the county. I don't have a position on this. They do a wonderful service. We interact with them with the commission, but my only, and I don't, I didn't hear if this is restructuring within their budget, and it's not costing anything, that's one thing. But if it's costing anything, I would encourage we just delay it a month until after the election and see what happens to our revenue, you know? That's my only concern. You know, we've got things coming on with court care that's coming down the road, and they're going to get funding for that. But the thing is, is that to allocate one dime right now, I question. After the, after the elections, if you get money, I probably would come back and support this, okay? Because I respect what they do. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Any other public comment? Okay, seeing no other public comment, we will move on. We're going to go on to item number twenty-fourth, which is to introduce by title only an ordinance amending the maximum length of stay at county campgrounds and to designate County Council to prepare a summary of the ordinance for publication as requested by County Council and Building Maintenance.
This is a really simple ordinance. We were, we had it where it was a maximum length of stay within a month, and then if you just kind of put two months together, they were staying for a really long time. So this just cleans up some stuff.
Okay. For a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any public comment? Okay, seeing no public comment, then we'll bring it back to the Board. Kylie, would you please pull the vote?
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Mastin?
Yes.
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Item number twenty-five, approve and authorize a step increase to A-11, Step E, effective September eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two for the Agricultural Commissioner as requested by us.
I will motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any public comment? Seeing no public comment, then we'll bring it back to the Board. Kylie, please pull the vote.
Supervisor Howard? Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Supervisor Mastin?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Okay, item number twenty-six, approve the staffing revisions for the Animal Services Department as requested by the County Administrative Officer, the Agricultural Commissioner, Sealer of Weights and Measures, and the Sheriff Coroner. Neil, are you going to take this on, or?
Yes, I can, Chair, thank you. As you all know, we were directed by the Board Supervisors to develop an implementation plan for the transition of Animal Services to the Sheriff's Office. Throughout this process, we've met several times with stakeholders, including the Ag Commissioner, the Sheriff, myself, Assistant County Administrative Officer, Mr. Hooper, as well as the Animal Services Supervisor. Primary to some of those discussions have been the staffing levels at each of these departments and what that's going to look like after the transition. The Board had also amended that direction in September to look for a new location for the Ag Department. So having that as part of the direction, we realized that the part, that the full-time staff that is currently supporting some of the Animal Services functions, when they don't have that ability to cover those positions or the part-time positions during the weekends, will be out of the picture. And so through those discussions and talking about how to make this transition as smooth as possible, it's our determination that the Animal Services Division will probably need additional full-time staff in order to make this transition successful. With the Agriculture Commission or Department being relocated, they'll take their secretarial position with them. And so this is kind of one of the things we've known going into this, is that Animal Services would need that position as well to be at the Animal Services facility. And so before today is the recommendation to reduce the part-time temporary allocation at Animal Services and create two full-time positions, one Kennel Attendant and one Admin Secretary for that department.
Cool. Motion?
I make a motion to approve that.
A motion and a second. Any public comment? Seeing no public comment, we'll bring it back to the Board. Questions, comments? Kylie, please pull the vote.
Supervisor Mastin?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Okay, now we're going to receive an update on the status of efforts taken to separate the Agricultural Commissioner, Sealer of Weights and Measures from the Animal Services Division, including the identification of a new program, of identification of new programs base as requested by the Administrative Officer, the Agricultural Commissioner, Sealer of Weights and Measures, and the Building Maintenance Director. Mr. Hooper?
Good morning. No, good afternoon. So this is kind of the opposite of what Neil just introduced in terms of the idea. There's no action requested with this item. This is really just an update for the Board and the public to understand where we're at with, again, kind of the other side of the equation when it comes to the dissolution of Animal Services. Obviously, we're going to need a place to put Agricultural Commissioner, Sealer of Weights and Measures. Through the course of kind of trying to figure all that out, we've had conversations with the County Sheriff and the Ag Commissioner, and it's fairly well-understood that keeping those two functions together is going to be problematic. So we did meet, as the Board Agenda Item notes, with the Building Maintenance Director of the County, County Administrative Leadership Staff identified a site. So at this point, we feel confident that by the end of the year, we should have a home for the Agricultural Commissioner. And according to their kind of inspection of the site, they feel like it's going to check all the boxes for what it is they need. So just wanted to report to the Board and the public we're making very good progress on that. And if there's any questions, we're certainly available.
Questions for Mr. Hooper? Thanks, Randy, appreciate it. Okay, now we're going to move on to item number twenty-eight, which is to receive and consider additional information regarding the recommendation to close the Juvenile Hall as presented by the Chief Probation Officer, and to take action on recommendation to order the closure of Delnort County Juvenile Hall as a custodial institution no later than March thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three, and direct staff to implement organizational and operational restructuring to implement closure. Lonnie?
Afternoon, Board.
Mr. Ryan?
Or Chief Probation Officer? So I will try and scream through this because I know there's plenty of discussion and public comment that needs to happen. But just to update you on some of the information that I've talked with folks about and gathered since our last meeting. First off, I did follow up and speak with Kathy Hapterson, Manager of Human Resources, as well as Chief Griffin, both regarding recruitment practices. Essentially, the conversation I had with Kathy is the same conversation I've had with her for the last five years. She, despite the situation we're currently in, she doesn't have any new suggestions for us as far as recruitment goes to try and get bodies through the door. I don't have the information here, but I will remind you that what I'm looking at is, at our current rates of hire, is five and a half years to recruit the number that we need for minimum staffing or a hundred and fifty bodies walking in the door today. So that's what I'm looking for.
So if I can just, and that's, is that including what you expect to lose during that five-and-a-half-year period?
Well, that's what I expect to lose in the next six months.
No, no, but I mean, you said take five-and-a-half years to get to?
Eleven.
To get to eleven, and you're including the people that you're going to lose?
The ones that?
And the people that we could lose within that next four-and-a-half years?
I'm including the ones that I would expect to lose within the next six to twelve months because of conversations and life that's happening that I'm aware of. Trying to predict who I would lose over the next five-and-a-half years, four-and-a-half years after that, I didn't even try. Speaking with Chief Griffin, he also did not have anything that he felt was pertinent to recruitment that would be different than what we've tried. He didn't, nothing stood out to him as specifically different that the city is doing than anyone else in trying to recruit employees at this time. I also spoke with eight other northern counties. Spoke is probably the wrong term. I sent out a survey and exchanged emails with eight northern counties that do not have juvenile halls. I, again, I include Calusa, I'm sorry, yeah, Calusa. They have a regional facility with two other counties. I did include them because they don't have a facility in their county, and so they're in the position where they do transport in custody, things like that. Some highlights from that survey, as you can see, the reason for closure for those four counties that have closed primarily cost and low population were the two primary reasons that all four indicated. Lassen County did indicate an inability to recruit and retain staff as one of their primary factors as well. In talking to them about their experiences, and this is all eight counties, of how many detentions they have per month, this graph breaks it down. Two counties, twenty-five percent, less than one detention per month. Thirty-seven, this is three counties, one to two per month. Two counties had two to three detentions, and one county had three to four detentions on average per month. Regarding transports per month, and this would be new law violations, so arrests as well as remands from court for violations. The counties were evenly split regarding transports, going from less than one to four to six, and two counties in each one of those categories. As far as a department's structure, how they handle transportation, detention, that sort of thing, again, keeping in mind that only four counties have gone through the process of closing a hall. This includes all eight. And so in that fifty, fifty-two, I can't read, sixty-two and a half? And so, in that fifty, fifty-two, I can't read, sixty-two and a half percent, so five counties, a number of those are counties that have not had a juvenile hall, and so they didn't go through that transition, but they handle that transport requirement and any detention process with POs and on-call staff. I didn't get an answer from Sierra County, but just knowing the nature of Sierra, they have three POs, including the chief, and so they are doing transports themselves. Two counties, Lassen and Siskiyou, both indicated that when they did close juvenile hall, they did incorporate new staff specifically for transports and detention. So, that is one unique way that they handled things. Regarding court challenges, two counties indicated that personal appearance orders and transport were challenges for them regarding court. One county indicated that they had had some difficulty in coordinating video appearances with the housing county. Five counties indicated they've not experienced any significant difficulties regarding court hearings, and none indicated a difficulty with meeting due process issues. Regarding family visitation, all counties participate or help facilitate in some method or, or way, family visitation and connection. They do so through coordinated visits, that's when they're transporting youth back into county for hearings or other appointments. They do provide parent transports, a number of them, and they also provide gas vouchers. One of the final questions I did ask them is specifically the four counties that have closed their halls, is whether they would reconsider their actions in that case. And out of those four, none would reconsider that decision at this juncture. Before I close, I did pass out a list of duties required by the probation departments. That list is, was put together by a retired chief in two thousand and ten. Some of those mandated requirements kind of are all summed up in certain areas, so there's a number of those that are listed separately that are incorporated in pre-sentence reports, for instance. And so, don't necessarily take that as each individual thing is separate and distinct. Some of those are rolled together. But I would point out that because it is so old from two thousand and ten, that was pre-two thousand and eleven realignment. And since that time, rather than just two categories of offenders being supervised in the state, there are now four categories of offenders being supervised in the state, of which probation has three of those. We've also gone through, as has been mentioned today, CCR, I'm blanking on it now, but essentially a, a change in how we deal with our juveniles and placement, and continuum of care reform, there it is. And so, probation plays a part in that, and we have responsibilities there as well. So, there are things that are not included on that list that would now apply. And to sum it up, as I've expressed to you before, I believe at this juncture, given the difficulties and challenges we're facing, my opinion is that closure at this juncture of the detention facility is the best option, and that would be my recommendation to you.
Okay. Any questions for Lonnie? Questions?
Lonnie, how, how many juveniles do you have that fall under six fifty-four?
Six fifty-four, we've got a handful. I'd have to go back and look at our numbers. I can think of two off the top of my head right now.
Not many.
And that's, yeah, there's a small number. Those, that's an informal probation without court wardship. There's another informal probation, seven twenty-five, that's informal with court wardship. Both of those are targeted at small periods of time, six months. And those are, you know, those cases typically happen before a petition's ever filed in juvenile court.
Thank you.
Anything else from Board members?
I don't have any questions, but I'd like to reserve my comments till after I hear from everyone.
Okay. Thanks, Lonnie.
Thank you.
We're going to open this up for public comment.
I'm Paul Dillard, I represent the Juvenile Justice Delinquency Prevention Commission. Lonnie's arguments are always pervasive, pervasive, and, and we expected it. It's unfortunate that, that we feel that we must make it public, that there, there is obviously some problems. We disclosed them to you in a July seventh document back in two thousand and seven at the closure of Bar O. This, there's one consistent thing that keeps going through there, and, and all the, that document we give you is very relevant to today. The only thing that has changed is that, in the probation department, probation officers are now leaving employment, and they're talking about treatment of people issues. And the same issues were in the earlier report that we give you for juvenile hall when we closed Bar O. We ask at that time that the Board of Supervisors and the County Administrator do a close introspection in the operation of the probation department. Since the last board, I've been talking and interviewing people and making myself available, I discovered that the three new people didn't realize that the July confidential memo exists, but County Council did have it, and I directed them, to them. Since, in that report, at the time, there was four people at, at the juvenile hall that had ten, fifteen years' experience. Well, Lonnie came on, and for whatever reason, I'm not blaming it on Lonnie, it's after Lonnie come on, those four people resigned and took out of their employment. I've chased them down clear to Texas, they're still working with kids. But they left that created vacancies in Bar O. I'm, excuse me, I misspoke, in juvenile hall. So then we started looking at Bar O, and we have since closed Bar O to staff juvenile hall. Now we're closing juvenile hall to staff probation vacancies. We're running out of places to close down, you know, and that's, that's a concern. Mr., our Chief Raymond has review of all juveniles that go, get referred to the DA, and, but he also has review of anybody that gets placed in juvenile hall from law enforcement, and that controls some of the population issue. We're not saying there shouldn't be strict review, we support his reason to review that, but it does cause population problems.
Paul, if you could wrap it up, please?
Yes, I have, I don't really have much more. In fact, that's your agenda. It should be noted that the Chief of Probation also controls all the proba-, I've already said that, the probation officer position, oh, probation officers positioned throughout the state is a high-recognized position, but people are leaving that. They're leaving to go to work for the county jail, other county departments, Pelican Bay, we understand that's pay, but some of them are going to unemployment, some of them are driving a school bus. We ask that you do exit interviews at the time when we did the last report, in that you find out, some red flags should have been thrown with these things, and nothing happened. And we talked to people, and they, they're saying that they've never been interviewed, or never been able to talk.
Thank you, Paul.
I, I do have to ask you one thing, Mr. Hemmingson, is that we are appointed, we are created by the Legislature in two commissions. We are appointed by a Superior Court Judge, but we don't get the due respect from this body to address issues for kids, and that's our job. So I don't know why you would treat me with a three-minute bar and interrupt me as I go and get me out of sync with my presentation, if, if you really care about what's going on. If you don't care, please get on the record that you don't care. You personally don't care, you know? Because this is an important issue. I'm here to tell you that there is vacancies, I've spent probably eighty hours since the last meeting, and people are saying that there's a treatment of people issues in this department. They are resigning out of the, out of juvenile hall, they're resigning out of probation officers, and they are quite frankly claiming a hostile work environment. I like Lonnie, I worked hard to have a relationship with Lonnie. I've, I don't understand this, but I can't sit here and not tell you that we are looking at a possible lawsuit down the road over a hostile work environment, and they have all kinds of people who have left the employment, they can subpoena for it. Now you need to listen to me. I'm your, I'm actually your friend. You know?
I, I do care, and I am listening to you, and I'm giving you latitude.
I'll close it. I'll close it, one paragraph. Our youth, our, our youth are expressing concerns and fears that juvenile hall is closing. It leaves them with less opinion or options for their troubled home life, except to run away, couch surf, or go homeless. The youth and the employees of this community deserve better. Unfortunately, this public disclosure most likely will adverse affect my relationship with them. It can't help but adverse. And, you know, I'm sorry about that, but the fact is, the people tell me this, and we must, we have a, the county has liability, and we are volunteers, and we don't take our oath lightly to represent the community and the youth, and you. That's why I'm here. I'm sorry if I offended you, I apologize, but the fact is, I have to get this message across. There's problems in the family, okay? They're saying it. We, we can't afford a lawsuit. We don't have any money to start with, you know? So, and I apologize to the public for being disjointed presentation, but you didn't, you didn't help me, but, okay?
Sorry, I, I'm sorry, didn't mean to ruin your, your sense of concentration. I think you're an important part of this whole discussion, and that's why I did allow you latitude. I appreciate you speaking up, and I take no offense.
Here, just real simple, if I was in a court of law, the prosecution just got an hour and a half last meeting, and kids only get three for defense? There's something wrong with this picture. Thank you.
All right, thanks. Appreciate it. Any other public comment?
Good afternoon. Norma Williams, Chapter President, DNC, ASIU, ten-two-one. As I mentioned last time, we had this discussion about juvenile hall. I did want, I made a note then, and I want to reiterate it now, that whatever your decision, whether it's to keep it as-is, special program, day, or close it in its entirety as the Chief recommends, is going to have a significant impact on the staff of proba-, of the probation department, both in the juvenile and adult portion of it. I have spoken with many, actually many of the JCOs, not all of the probation officers, but I am definitely aware of the issues and problems even on the probation, adult probation side. And it is true, they did not sign on when they, when they became employed with the county to be going over to the hall to basically look after juveniles. But given the fact that both sides are severely understaffed, necessity was, was the reason. My, again, as I told you, my whole responsibility is towards the staff, both definitely at the hall, regardless of what your decision is, I have to look out for them. And so, whatever you decide is going to have a significant impact on them when you're looking at the hall staff, from cooks all the way to the supervising JCOs, it's also going to have a significant impact and make significant changes to our contract, because there are sections in that contract that apply specifically to juvenile hall. And again, whatever you decide is, again, is your decision. You have to factor in a lot of things in relation to the youth, in relation to their families, in relation to due process in the courts. That's above my pay grade, and I don't get paid to do this as a union leader. But again, you have to take into consideration the staff. That's my responsibility, and whatever you decide, I'm going to have to work with County Administration on making sure that each and every single one of them get what they deserve and what they are entitled to. Thank you.
Chair, can I ask Norma a question?
Sure.
I know it's unconventional.
Excuse me, I just want, I'm sorry. I, I forgot to give you copies.
Norma, so, under the current structure, when, when something closes, I don't know if you've experienced this before, but do the current employees have to reapply for a job?
Yes.
Okay. So if they're terminated due to the juvenile hall closure, then they are required to reapply for whatever new job the juvenile hall has?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
It's Article ten of our contract specifies that we would basically be considered a layoff. They would each, they would all be given a list of vacancies within the county, and they would then have to take a look to see what's comparable to them. They obviously would be put, number one, on that list. I've been through this with Bar O. I can tell you that we have encouraged hall staff to basically apply for any vacancies within the county, within county employment, that they feel is comparable to them, even if it takes them outside of our bargaining units. I mean, I, we're basically encouraging them to look out for themselves. They have families to support, okay? You guys will also take, take that into consideration. In terms of what was just mentioned in terms of recruitment, I understand the Chief addressed that, but also what the Commissioner addressed in terms of retention. Yes, the union is well-aware of issues regarding both recruitment and retention. I cannot and will not address it here, that's an, that's be, and obviously an HR issue, but the union is very well, is aware of retention problems and the reasons why. But as a union leader, the only thing that I can tell you is this, my hands as a union leader is tied to enforce the contract per both our grievance and disciplinary articles if employees cannot or will not stand up and defend themselves. I can only do so much. I cannot do it for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Finally, thank you for hanging around. Apologize for the wait, we're running a little behind.
David Dornis, Juvenile Justice Commission. A couple of things. One is back in two thousand and seventeen, when Bar O was closing, we were told repeatedly that it was under discussion with the Board, it was under discussion with the Board, then it was closed. Then we found out later, a year later, that the fate of Bar O had been settled much before the public talk and the Board meetings. It had already been taken care of, it was a done deal, and this was just basically showboating to make the public feel like they were involved. Now we're down to juvenile hall. Well, juvenile hall has been on the cutting block since Bar O. The senior administration in probation has been wanting to get rid of ju-, uh, juvenile hall, just like they wanted to get rid of Bar O, so they could move staff over to adult probation. The second thing is that it's just too much trouble. Bar, juvenile hall is just too much trouble for them. The second thing is that if we send our youth to Humboldt County, there's something nobody has talked about yet. Humboldt County has a horrible, horrible problem with youth gangs. We're sending our youth down there, they're coming back to Del Norte County, either already members of, or thinking strongly about starting their own, because what is a gang to a youth offender? It's a family. And now they found a way of having a family that they haven't had before. That's our fault. What juvenile hall is giving these kids is a home, structure, support, somebody to talk to that understands their problems, and they're going to lose that. We're basically ruining the hopes of a lot of kids that haven't had the chance to have a decent life. Paul and I go to juvenile hall on a regular basis. We visit with staff, we visit with the employees, we visit with the youth. And what we've learned is, it's not a jail, it's a locked facility, but it's nurturing. It is not a torture chamber. It is a very nurturing place. A lot of the kids- A lot of the kids that get released from Juvenile Hall actually want to go back because the home they're living in or the field they're living in or the forest they're living in is nothing compared to what they have. I'll give you one example. One of the cooks, one time, cooked a birthday cake for one of the youth. And he was 15 years old. And when she brought the cake out for all the youth to share with candles on it, he started crying. And he was a very tough individual. And he told the cook, this was the first time he had, one, ever had his birthday celebrated, and, number two, the first birthday cake he'd ever had in his life. And we're taking that away from people. Things that we don't even know are going on, we're taking away. It's very important that we keep Juvenile Hall open and operating to serve our youth. We're not locking them up. We're serving them. We're providing a lifeboat for people that have no other things to go to. We owe it to them. It's my responsibility to try to keep that stuff going for them. Please do the right thing. Please. If it comes down to dollars, that's all it is. We're trading dollars for lives, and that's what we're doing. We're also filling the pipeline to jail as adults. Because if we don't help them now, they're going to big people jail. We can't let that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
So, we got rid of Barrow, and I can understand that. But getting rid of our Juvenile Hall is not okay. You're going to not only displace our youth, but you're going to displace people who are employed there. I don't know what the issue is in regards to morale, but it seems to be like, if there's poor morale, I would be looking at supervisor. What's causing that? And as far as not having the people to work there, there are many retired staff from Pelican Bay who would probably, you know, if you could develop a four-hour program during the day for them to come in, and it'd probably be a good thing for not only the Juvenile Hall, but for the juveniles. Because you have older adults there that are mature. You're not trying to pull shenanigans on them. Develop some kind of program where the public can get involved. Instead of, you know, that's a nice place out there. Throwing it all away, and there's no reason for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Yes. I was shocked to learn that there's only like one or two kids at our Juvenile Hall. And I'm just not sure what's happening to them, or are they going back in our school district? But, you know, we really need to emphasize on getting to kids earlier and giving them opportunities before they get in trouble. Very disheartening that we're abandoning our youth. And, you know, if it's about staffing, who's in charge of the staffing? Is it DHHS? Prohibition? I mean, we shouldn't be letting down our youth. I don't know. And if we're going to save, you know, $30,000 by shutting it down, we're going to cost ourselves a lot more with lifetime of incarceration. Be interested from the experts here if the facility works. Are juveniles being reformed? And what is their recivitism rate?
My name is Jordan Anderson. I'm the Juvenile Hall Facility Manager. I didn't come prepared to speak today. I just wanted to listen to the comments here and kind of speak to some of the concerns that are being addressed today. This was no light manner that we took upon trying to figure out how to fill the needs of staffing at the Juvenile Hall, something that we've been discussing for some time. Really trying to find solutions in addressing those issues and becoming as flexible as we could to accommodate our staffing, to create a workplace environment that my employees want to see a work-life balance. Unfortunately, the work that we ask these employees to do is tireless. It is 24 hours a day, seven days a week. It does not stop. That interrupts that work-life balance. It requires them to work holidays, their son's birthday, Thanksgiving, Christmas, weekends, nights. Their 12-hour shifts can be often extended to 16 hours. There is a morale issue. There is a problem with that staffing. It's a very tough job to do. And I've been doing it for 17 years. There's a cost that our employees pay to do this job. And they find it rewarding when we can make a difference in a young person's life. The question becomes, can we continue to make an impact on our youth without a facility? I think that we can. What our department has been trying to find is how do we address those youth before that facility, that detention is needed? How do we bridge that gap? How can we provide a branch in our department that will address those needs before secure detention is needed? And that, I find, can be more impactful to some, a youth's life than waiting to the point that we're at now, which is the option of secured detention. There'll always be that need in our community. It's an unfortunate part of life. But the question is, how do we continue to staff it without increasing our nutrition rate in the department to continue to ask the ones that are still working to work more, to work another weekend, to sacrifice another special day with their family or another holiday? That is a hurdle and an obstacle that is difficult. And it's very difficult for you guys to make this decision. I understand that. But this is going to be a continued conversation in our community. It's how do we address our youth and how can we best serve them? And I'm not the only one that needs to be a part of that conversation. Our community needs to be involved every step of the way. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay. Seeing no other public comment, then I'm going to bring it back to the board. Valerie, you have, I mean, Supervisor Starkey?
You know, yesterday, we received a 2017 letter. And in reading that letter, it completely broke my heart that we waited five years, knowing that this was what was reported five years ago. And this type of thing that is outlined in this letter is continuing today. I think that closing Juvenile Hall is treating the symptom and not the illness. And I think we need to relook at what is causing all the problems over there. I'm making a bold statement here by saying that. But in the last two weeks, I've talked to the judges. I've talked to law enforcement, who go to try and book kids in and get turned away. I've talked to employees who have left. I've talked to the BSCC. I have talked to mothers whose kids are the only kids in Juvenile Hall. I've talked to foster mothers and their experiences with what goes on at Juvenile Hall. I am just not comfortable, I can't ignore all the information that I have and make a decision here today to close Juvenile Hall that is a lifeline to so many people. We've got to get in there and fix the problem and not the symptom. I am opposed to closing it.
Any other comments?
I, I'm also not in, not in the opinion of closing it at this time. I realize the personnel issues with staffing. I know the discussions haven't come lightly. But, you know, given the report that was shared with us yesterday, coupled with the comments that were made today, made me think back to times in prison when-
You're finally out?
In, huh?
You're finally out?
I'm finally out, yes. When inmates in prison were finding success in certain programs, and we wanted to transfer them out of Pelican Bay, there was tears shed by these hardened, you know, quote-unquote hardened criminals because they didn't want to sink back into the gang lifestyle or those things that were dragging them down. Made a big difference to them. I understand the financial aspect of this discussion. But it seems like there's some extenuating circumstances that we need to look into. So I'm not prepared to vote to close the hall at this time as well.
Yes, Supervisor Mastin.
Yes, and so I have talked to a number of people. I think there are things that we need to look at. But I also don't think that we close something without having something in mind for what we're going to do and what that's going to look like. And I don't, I never think it's a good idea to move forward without a plan. Because we end up paying a lot more. And in this case, it's more than money. It's kids. So I do hear, and I do want for us to address and want to have further discussion, though, with the problem we have with staff and this overload of work because we don't have enough staff. So I did hear you saying that. And how we do that and what that looks like in order to get through this time, I do think we have to look at that. Because we can't continue to ask our staff to give up their nights and weekends and holidays at the same time. And so we have to find a solution that's going to work for our staff in the interim as we move forward in these other areas. So I think that, I think that there are some wonderful things that we can do for our children. And I think putting partners together and creating collaborations to look at what are those services and those prevention ideas that some people have hit on that we can provide our children is a good opportunity here. So I don't want for us to, you know, do nothing in the interim. Because if we leave here with no closure, then what happens to our staff and what happens to our children in a couple of months? And so I think, I think we have to have some sort of plan here. And I'm not in favor of a total closure. And I've said that before, the other two times when we addressed this issue. So I don't know where we go from here, but-
Thank you. Supervisor Howard, you got anything to add?
No, I'm familiar with the 2017 report. It was shared with us last night again. I know Supervisor Emmison and I had an opportunity to see it in 2017 during our conversations with Barrow. But it didn't change our minds then, at least the comments that were made by the Juvenile Justice Commission about going forward with that closure. And I'm not even sure it's relevant at this point in time. What is relevant is the county's ability right now to comply with state law. And I'm trying to figure that piece of it out. Obviously, we have the things that we've discussed here today, which is the recruitment issues, basically the lack of juveniles coming through the system, the heartstrings that are being pulled specific to juveniles that have succeeded in these programs, that are being helped, but then have to exit to family lives that literally don't exist. Those are, those are difficult challenges, and they're coming more pervasive within our community. The, our ability to serve those children is difficult. And I don't have the answer to that. I, obviously, I was in agreement at our last meeting that we needed to have additional discussion about that. We're here today having that additional discussion. I still don't see a solution to address those state mandates that require a certain level of staffing at Juvenile Hall. And it's troubling to me. But at the same time, the attrition most likely that we're seeing at Juvenile Hall is due to these staff being essentially overworked, and they didn't sign up for this job. They didn't sign up for the job that they're being transferred to at Juvenile Hall, being juvenile correction officers. But at the same time, we have to meet a need that's mandated by the state. So I've got a lot of difficulty going forward in trying to make a very tough decision. I still haven't made that decision. And I want to make sure that we have everything out on the table, including some of the comments that were made by my fellow supervisors today. It seemed like there was some, I don't know if these are personal matters that we should take offline out of these discussions, but you've obviously had some conversations that I haven't been privy to, and I'd like to hear about them.
Yeah, and I want to address at least one of the comments that was made, that this is a done deal. And Barrow was a done deal, when none of that is true. We've been talking about the population at Juvenile Hall for a number of years. And Lonny has been an advocate for keeping it open. And now I think we've gotten to the point where there is no, I mean, there is little to no option. He's outlined some programs that he'd like to do for the juveniles, not closing the hall, but closing the detention part of the hall so that he can afford the youth more opportunities and more programs. And, in my opinion, we're going down the road of, if we don't be proactive and do something, the state's going to come down and make us do it. And that, I don't think, is an option that we want to live with. Because at that point, we're not going to have a plan. They're just going to do it. We, I don't think we can, I don't think we can afford to be out of compliance, putting the kids in the center in jeopardy or our liability to the county being in jeopardy. So I personally don't, and I do care, Mr. Dillard. I do care. I do care what happens to the kids. This is pretty important. But with every crisis, maybe there's some opportunity. And this could be an opportunity to enhance what we're giving our kids now with the funding that we have. And I think that, that, you know, while shipping them off is not the best option, maybe there'll be less of that because of this situation. Other counties are doing it. And other counties, like Mr. Raymond, or Chief Raymond, said that nobody would go back to opening it back up again. Those are, those are pretty profound. But we're not the only ones that are having this problem or have had this problem. Most of them have closed down because of populations, and populations that were higher than what we have. So I just, I'm inclined to look at a way of doing some more programming and helping these kids out before they get to the detention cycle. So that's where I'm standing with it, so. Board, anything? Nothing? Kick it down, kick the can down the road.
Does, do we have a working group that this could fit into? I would really like to see some further work. Is there anything that we have in existence that fits for further discussions? Because we go from two weeks to the next meeting, and there's no opportunity for us to look at coming up with some solutions with our, with our staff. And I just think that that could be real helpful for us. Like, I would like to look at some sort of closure, but not a total closure, just to relieve staff of some of those overload of work. And so I, because I don't see us, I don't hear us in consensus here. So is there, is there a working group that we could assign someone to go do some further discussion on this?
I guess I'm kind of puzzled by your comments because I guess what staff has presented is, is a plan. It is, it also has some alternatives to a full closure with programs for diversion to really access health, mental health type issues with our youth. That's, I guess, what's been presented to us today to act upon to a certain extent. And then to move forward as efficiently and as effectively as possible to that March date that's been presented to us. Putting another committee together with maybe some of the work that I guess Juvenile Justice Commission already does, I'm not, they don't have the answer either. I, they, somebody on the commission stated that at the last meeting. We're still going to potentially be faced with these state mandated issues at the end of the day. So I, I don't know what the best course of action is, but I just wanted to clarify that I heard you correctly, that staff did present something to us for us to consider today. And just by creating the committee doesn't solve what staff has brought to us.
I, I just want to say though, what you just said is that we already do have a committee. We have the Juvenile Justice Commission. They've made their recommendation. They are telling us, do not close this hall. So you're right, we don't necessarily need another one, but we need to listen to what we have.
Yes, so if we don't close the hall, again, Juvenile Justice Commission needs to bring to this board basically the resources which Lonnie has essentially talked to us about, talked to you about, which is our ability to staff and meet the mandates of state law. We've had years and years of discussion about this, kicking the can down the road to this moment here today. And my hope is that, Mr. Dillard, is that as Chair of the Juvenile Justice Commission, there would have been a solution five years ago to support staff in those recruitment efforts. But I, what I'm hearing today from my own board is that those efforts, because of potentially personality, personnel issues, failed. But that's what I thought I heard. Is that true? Because there were some accusations leveled here that...
Yeah, no, I mean, I, I brought forward some solutions and, you know, as far as maybe prior employees who've already gone through the, the correctional officer core training to bring them back. I've been told that they're not welcome back if they've left voluntarily. So I mean, there's one thing, we can develop a robust extra help list. That we definitely have an abundance of retired correctional officers in this community that could pick up a four, six, eight hour shift. I mean, we, we definitely, when, when this was presented to us two weeks ago, it was because of staffing issues. We haven't had a chance, I mean, I haven't, and if the previous boards have had a chance to say, oh, this is what we need to do. One of my conversations in the past two weeks was with the Smart Workforce. Have we utilized everything that they possibly could go out to recruit individuals and, and find these individuals? Have we done that yet? I mean, I feel like there's just way more than we can do than to close the juvenile hall. And we haven't, and if the previous boards have been given a chance to, to solve these problems, then I apologize because, but I wasn't on the board. I'm just saying, have we done everything that we can to recruit? And then have we done everything that we can to retain these individuals? The stories that I'm hearing from past employees is so disturbing. And then to read in that report yesterday, they're exactly the same issues. What, what changed in five years? What did we do as a board in five years to do anything different so that we didn't have to be going through this now?
Well, if I could just speak to the Barrow, it's a total apples and oranges type of thing. We were paying county dollars to house out of county people.
Didn't those out of county people pay for their placements?
Yeah, that's correct.
Not enough to keep it going. We were paying, we were paying an inordinate amount of money to house other counties' juvenile kids.
And I, and I, I understand that. I totally understand that. What I'm saying is with the contents of that letter from 2017 directing why there was issues over at the probation department have not changed. That's my concern.
Well, and I don't want to put Lonnie on the spot, but there's been some accusations, Lonnie, that you're, maybe you want to come up, that you are not accepting qualified people that request to have a job.
Sure, there's been insinuations made, but so far I have not heard one ounce or shred of detail or substance to. So I really don't have anything to respond to because my character is being degraded. My ability to do my job is being besmirched, but nobody's willing to actually lay evidence out. Frankly, I didn't go back and resurrect the past and review the letter from 2017 because I didn't figure that would be an issue. And I am disappointed that the Chairman of the JJC decided to drag this out again. What do you want me to do? Really, what is it that you're looking for from me?
Well, I, first of all, who, who gives you direction? Is it the Superior Court Judge or is it the Board of Supervisors?
Both.
We both do, so we have equal...
You control my budget and county policy.
Right.
I'm appointed by the, the Presiding Judge and so I live betwixt and between both worlds and have to answer to both sides.
Okay, but so if you're asking us, what do we want you to do? I don't know that that's our role to tell you what to do. I think in, you know, from my research, that would come from the Superior Court Judge. I'm just telling you all the information that I've got that is, I can't ignore when having to make this very difficult decision. And as far as going into specific details, you know all the details. It's just, I'm not going to air everybody's laundry here. But you should be well aware of the details of, of the, what's been being said.
Well, I do recall that the Chair asked for you to fire me when Barrow came up because I was apparently not doing what I should do to try and recruit all the counties to send their kids to Barrow because we didn't have local youth in the facility. We were spending county dollars to support those youth. And the numbers, as we've discussed very clearly, those numbers of youth in custody are not a secret. They've been declining for years since juvenile realignment in 2007. And so all those facts were laid out and on the table when that decision was made. And whatever character assassination is attempted, it doesn't change any of those facts. We didn't have youth in that facility to support the operation of it. But we are talking about Barrow.
That was written in 2017 and now we're here in 2022. I'm talking about the, the behaviors that needed to change didn't change. That's what I'm talking about.
I'm not aware of what behaviors need to change. So that would be helpful in a frank conversation that I wish I would have had with someone prior to this meeting instead of it all being laid out and insinuated by people. Again, what do you expect me to do? What is the answer that you're looking for from me in this context?
I'd just like to clarify something. You said the Chair asked for your resignation or asked, what's your...
Yes.
Oh, juvenile justice?
Yes.
You're not talking about me?
No, not talking about...
So I, I do have to ask since three of these board members sat down with the judges, what, what were, did you say what the judge's recommendation was? Did anybody? Did you ask the question, what the judges wanted to do?
I just feel that that should come straight from Judge McHale-Frisch or Judge Cochran. I mean, honestly, I don't, I, I don't want to misinterpret what they meant, but my understanding, and yeah, you could have contacted them as well, but my understanding is that they did not, they're not in favor of closing the hall, but I don't want to say that if I, if I misinterpreted it.
Yeah, there's, there's no, there's not even a discussion over whether the judges want to close the hall. They do not want to close the hall. I don't want to close the hall. I don't think, I don't think any of us want, Lonnie doesn't want to close the hall.
That's correct.
This is not, this is not something that we want to do. This is not a want. This is getting down to necessity because if we don't make movement on this, and, and to correct me if I'm wrong, Lonnie, changing, if it's still a detention center, we're still required to have the number of people that we have to have.
Yes.
For the most part.
Yes.
Maybe a couple here or there. So, so we still have to have that number of people if it's going to be a detention center. So, and you laid it out, not at this meeting, I think at the last meeting, much clearer on, on what you wanted to see going forward as far as programming and that kind of thing. So we need to remember that. But getting, it's, it's not something, this is not something that is an easy decision and it's not something that any of us want to do. This is something that is, is going to come down on us from higher above, in my opinion. I don't know what you feel about it, but I don't think you can stay out of compliance and expect to not have somebody come in and say, hey, wait a minute, you can't do this.
Sometime in the next year, I'll be here reporting to you what my presentation to the BSCC was and what our mitigation plan will be. And likely it will be a timeframe of about 90 days, hire more people. That will be the mitigation plan because there will be no other way to solve the issues that we're struggling with at juvenile hall. And if you don't think I'm doing a great job of recruiting, bring Manager Haftrist in here. Talk to CAO Lopez. They're intimately involved in the recruitment of employees in the county. They retain all the records. Have them come and tell you what recruitment has been like.
And so this, these allegations of hostile work, work environment, is that something that's been reported to you or reported out?
Probably not a good idea to address personnel issues in a public meeting.
In public, exactly.
My opinion, more than happy to have those conversations in a different context.
Yeah, and I'm completely out of line, but I just think that it's lousy to throw that out there and then not have the opportunity, so that's, that's on me. I apologize.
So I'm looking for direction. And I'll do the work, whatever it is that the board requires and expects of me to do. That's what I'm looking for. So I need some direction on how you would like to proceed at this juncture. Because making the decision or not at this, at this stage, the problem still exists. So what is it that you would like to see as a board in order to either solve the problem as you see it or bring back further information that would allow you to make the decision you need to make?
I'm not so sure that we would have direction for, just from my point of view, direction for it right now. What I see is that we possibly would be having a closed session discussion or, or two. And can bring this back at a later time.
I don't know, do we have basis for a closed session discussion on this?
To talk about personnel matters.
Yeah, it sounds like you can do an evaluation.
What about if the direction is to temporarily suspend the operations and so that we can assist in either getting you the staffing that you need or develop the plan? I mean, I, I'm like, this is not even what I really want to do either, but however, we've got to come up with something.
So temporary suspension of detention?
Because when I'm talking with BSCC, they, they were, they were like adamant, you do not want to close. You don't want the words closed in your verbiage. You want it to be vacated. Because if not, in, in five years when we need to repopulate it, if we need to repopulate it, then that was just going to cost us money we don't have.
Right.
So we definitely need to be very careful in that. But I understand your crisis right now. I understand that people are leaving from, from what I'm hearing. Even as we speak, they're finding other jobs. So, but, but I mean, a lot of that has to do with that they're fearful too. They don't have a job. They're being told that it's going to possibly close. So I can understand, everybody needs to take care of themselves. But if we just suspended operations, kept those, those employees there that are employed to start developing whatever plan or program that you're going to have, and then if, you know, because I do believe that we need a safe place for our juveniles to go, get a chance to see if, you know, transporting them, you know, 82 miles down the road to Humboldt, I don't know how that's going to really work. You talked with the other counties. I, I think they're probably closer in mileage, but I don't know. But, you know, I, I just, if that, if you're looking for an idea, a solution, would that be something middle ground that, that might work for you?
Well...
Well, we had that discussion and that was not middle ground, but suspension of detention, right? We're talking about suspending the detention facility?
Just temporary.
Yeah.
Well, I had, I had asked for us to consider closing during the day and being open at night and having the monitoring system for the youth during the day. And I didn't, I didn't get any more information on that or to know if that was viable or not. But that's, I was looking at that as alleviating some of the staffing pressures for a kind of interim kind of solution until we can figure out where we're going.
And if that's the direction of the board, we'll make it work. It will require custody contracts with at least Humboldt County, if not more. We will detain kids in 24/7 custody because not all of them will be eligible for that type of release. We will staff graveyard.
Well, we already send those kid, well, we send our, some of our kids out already, right?
No, we don't.
No?
This is kind of a...
The ones that need the special...
This is kind of a deja vu. We had this discussion about having graveyard shifts only and that's kind of the issue that we're having now is you can't get staff and you can't expect them to be working a graveyard shift forever.
No, no, and I, that's why I said interim. And I don't even know if the staff would be willing or, because I didn't hear that. I didn't hear whether staff would even be considered or be willing.
At this point, we have graveyard staff working. And what we would do in that case, if the board's direction is to run a day release program, we will continue to operate night shift and we will roll the other staff in that we have to run transports and programs.
And that's additional costs?
Contract with Humboldt County, yeah, it would be an additional cost.
Well, I could go along with the, the temporary suspension of the detention facility and start working from there. Does that work?
If that's the direction of the board, that's what we'll do.
But this is not a dollars issue, right? I mean, you've got enough money in your budget to recruit and make this thing taking work. We've had it for years. I just feel we're kicking the can down the road with no solution in sight.
Well, and as I take Supervisor Mastin's idea, it would not just be a, a shift to a day release program. From what I'm hearing, there's at least some consensus, consensus on the board to explore other options and look at other solutions, if I'm not mistaken.
Solutions, that's what we're looking for.
Yes.
We've got no direction.
I, I'd just like to give you guys more insight into staffing and recruiting. So I've been working for the county for 17 years to include Barrow Ranch and Juvenile Hall. I can count in two hands how many months we've been fully staffed in 17 years. It's about seven months. Seven months in 17 years that we've been fully staffed. That's, that's the reality of Delmar County in my experience with Barrow Ranch and the juvenile hall. Very limited time that we've been able to be fully staffed and be fully operational and be able to meet all the requirements of BSCC and do all the programs that we want to see for our youth to provide relief for sick, sick leave, vacations, FMLA requests, and be able not to require an exorbitant amount of overtime. Very limited time. I just wanted to give you guys that, that picture of what that looked like in my, my career. I just wanted to give you guys that, that picture of what that looked like in my, my career.
The tag team, I should get to make a comment. It'll be very brief.
Fine.
It'll be very, be very brief. One of the things is, I understand why he takes it personally. But I'm not the single person here. I represent a commission. You won't find it on the document because we're having trouble getting the letterhead on it, but there'll be signatures on it. It, the, you have copies of 2017. There were signatures on it. These people are concerned. It's not my issue, just like you. You're the, you're the chairman. If they outvote you, you gotta, you gotta sign the document, okay? And he raises the thing of, of recommendation of firing in 17. The comment was either for the board to deal with the issues or fire him. And I didn't put that in there. I didn't even write that. That paragraph was written in, in the meeting. And you'd be surprised who did it and, or put it on the table. It took, it took commission to do it. I like Lonny. I think he means well. I'm hurt that I had to do this, but I had to come forward and bring this forward. People are saying things. I don't know what they're going to say if investigation shows up. He may come out as a white knight. That's, I'd be happy for that. Okay, I really would. I think in his heart, he means good for kids. I think that he does some things that contributes to what we have a problem. But the issue is that in 2017, we recognize, recognize, or we recommended that you do an oversight committee, okay? We recommended that you do separation interviews. We recommended that some recruitment things since we, because we were hearing it was a philosophy issue that Lonny's a too much cop and it should be more care and treatment, that people are getting screened. I don't know. I don't sit in his interviews. You know, we didn't, we have tried hard, and he'll tell you, in the last five years, to rehabilitate our reputation with him. We have tried hard to build the trust between him. And yet, he got blindsided and I'm sorry. You can't, you, you wouldn't know what kind of week I have. I mean, I'm working till 11 o'clock. My last interview last night was 8:30, okay? And then I went home and typed reports till midnight. Now, I'm waking up early typing again. It's, I was on the computer again. It's six this morning. This has been a very ugly thing for me. I'm supposed to be in a medical appointment right now that I called and told them, "I can't make it because Juvenile Hall's too important." It, this is an ugly thing. I just want you to look at it. The first thing I said to you when I came last two weeks, "We need to fix this together. I want to work with you to fix this." You know? And it's, it's just unfortunate that we're here, you know? And, and it's unfortunate that he had been slapped in the side of the head. But it's not my fault, okay?
So, Mr. Dillard, if I, I don't mean to interrupt.
No, no, please.
If you've got something going, I don't mean to interrupt if you're, if you're on a roll or something. I lose my...
I get on.
It's not pretty easy anyway. But aren't you guys the oversight committee?
No.
What do you, what?
We are there basically to make sure kids get treated fairly and get with due process issues. I monitor where, whether the attorneys that represent the kids are doing their jobs. We sit in court to see that they get due process.
So, what's, what would an oversight committee oversee?
Oh, oversight. One, I think that what we were advocating, that he doesn't have a supervisor. The judge says, board does. Well, actually, the judge says, CAO does it. CAO says, the judge does it. And you know what? That's unfair to him.
Oh, I agree. I, 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 yeah. I think that, I think the judges are, are not taking their responsibility is what I...
You need to tell judges that because I'm not going to, you know, I, I've had conversations.
I wouldn't have a problem at all if he was standing right here.
Well, good. Go down there. I'll get you an appointment.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I can, I can make my own appointment. I, I just think that, you know, we get that pointing of the fingers. We, like Lonny said, we control his budget.
Yeah.
But we don't control, we, we didn't hire him. We can't fire him.
Well, maybe you need to look at what social services come up and, and ask for getting deputy directors. Maybe you need somebody that oversees law enforcement in general. I, I don't know. I'm just speaking off the top of my head.
Well, you said an oversight committee, and I just want to know what that oversight committee has been overseeing. I mean, it sounds to me like you're over, you're doing, you guys are doing the oversight of how the kids are being treated and handled and...
Okay, give us, give us the authority to supervise.
To supervise?
You're the one, you're the one about the issue.
No, you're talking about a whole different, I, I'm, you're, I'm talking about an oversight committee. That's not somebody that has the authority to tell somebody what to do or how to do it. But to report back to somebody who has the authority, which would be the judge.
Hey, we did that in 2017. And we played by the rules, the, um, human relation rules or Department of Personnel rules that we marked it confidential. We trusted you would take that report and take interest in it or find somebody to take interest or delegate it to somebody. But I don't know what happened in that because we gave you the report and we stepped back because we do not micromanage.
And the judge received that letter?
Yeah, it's addressed to the judge.
Yeah, and they...
With copies too.
Yeah.
What really happened is Jay wouldn't accept the report. He told me that it had to be confidential. So, we took it to County Council, which was Elizabeth Cable at the time. They stamped it confidential. They stamped, they received it. And, and we backed out. Other than talking at the board. So, you know, I, I just, I don't want to lock up kids. I told you that the last two weeks ago. I'm against locking. I don't see, see them locked up. But I, and my co-paterson told you that it's no good sending, I'm scared of sending. I talked to kids here the last weekend and they were telling me they have fears. They're worried. They, they, they're concerned about going to Humboldt. That won't stop them from getting incarcerated because they get in trouble. But they, they, they're afraid. In fact, one of them told me, you know, Juvenile Hall is my second home. When I'm not in foster care, that's where I have to go. You know? And, yeah, that's just passionate issues, okay?
Well, I, I, you know, I, I think that, I just think that, you know, that reinforces the job that Lonny is doing, that the kids want to be there rather than being with their foster parents. So, the breakdown is probably somewhere else in the system. The family, the foster care, the something else that keeps driving them back.
But the problem...
So, I don't want to get into the whole issues of things. We, we can deal with Lonny's budget. We can deal with suspending the detention part of Juvenile Hall. We can't deal with his, whether he's going to be in place. And you've already done that with your letter to the judges. They're not doing anything about it. So...
The, the issue is, we supported Lonny. We listened to him about his recruitment problems in Juvenile. And I spoke to him in the last meeting that we didn't help it when they was aware that back in June 21, that we're talking about converting it to adult facility. Staff know that. They're worried about it. They're looking for other jobs. They don't want to get caught short-handed. But it wasn't till the last meeting here I met with you that we started looking at vacancies, other vacancies. And I can't rationalize why people that have a high prestige state job interacting with the courts as a probation officer are willing to give that up for unemployment? You know, to drive a school bus? Come on. And, and my report says it. That should have thrown some red flags to somebody that there may be something wrong. And when we talked to people, I couldn't shut them up. Okay? Now, what do I do? I become part of the problem and become part of a liability for me if I don't report. I have a duty bound by my oath, as he has a duty by oath, to bring that to attention. Because if they are true, we have serious issues. Now, I can't bring them in and put them on a, on a, you know, and make them testify on interviews. I'm, we don't, we, we're an oversight, but we're, I'll tell you, BSCC on one of the issues in, in Juvenile Hall over a use of force thing told me, Elizabeth Gong told, "It's not your duty to investigate." Okay? So, I don't see it that way, but I'm not going to argue with BSCC. So, but this, this matter needs to be verified by somebody. Like I said earlier when I started, he comes up clean, I'll give him apology. I can't, I'll come in here and give him the apology if he comes up clean. You know? But I have to report. And I didn't do that on my own, not before or now. Thank you.
If I could just interject something here, speaking with Judge McElfriss yesterday. He, he is interested in meeting with the board to come to some sort of collaboration about the issue of supervision or however you want to word it, of the chief. So, I, I hope that we could facilitate that in the near future and iron out that, that wrinkle for sure.
So, what's the pleasure of the board? Sure.
Just one more option is to tell us to keep trucking for now. So, if we're not at a juncture where you feel comfortable making any decision, but you need more information, that is an option available to you.
Yeah, I'm uncomfortable going that direction also, so... I'm uncomfortable trucking the same, trucking the same path and expecting a different result. It doesn't work for me. Nobody's going to speak up and say anything?
Well, I, like I said a minute ago, I, I think we have some closed session discussions to, to be made, you know, personnel issues. So, I think that discussion needs to happen. I don't want to say keep on trucking and, and remain out of compliance and, you know, expect them to just keep going with no staff. But I think another discussion needs to be, needs to be had.
For, for the result, to coming to some solution of what?
Possibly resolving personnel issues.
Okay.
Or just possibly just gathering more information in that regard.
So, you're proposing to table this discussion until later for me?
Correct. Or to continue.
Or continue.
What, whatever the proper word would be.
Yeah, for this to be a tabling.
Jeez, I can never get that right.
Continuing to hearing, tabling's an agenda item.
Okay, so is that the pleasure of the board to table this item? Okay, consider it tabled then. We will move on. Okay, budget transfers. We have item number 29, which is in a budget, is a proven adopt a budget transfer 1-0-03 in the amount of $1,200 within the Office of Emergency Services. We had a presentation on that earlier. Number 30 is a proven adopt budget transfer 1-0-04 in the amount of $15,075 within the boating safety budget unit to cover payroll costs as requested by the sheriff. 31 is a proven adopt budget transfer 1-0-05 in the amount of $34,884 within the administration budget unit and budget transfer 10, or 1-0-06 in the amount of $500,000 within the grant budget unit as a result of the 2021 Community Development Block Grant Award as requested by Administrative Services. Number 32, approve and adopt budget transfer 1-0-07 in the amount of $189,785 within the Community Development Department Planning Budget Unit for the inclusion of the regionally, regional early action planning grant into the planning division's fiscal year 2223 budget as requested by the Community Development, Director of Community Development. And 33, approve and adopt budget transfer 1-0-08 in the amount of $10,400 within the Juvenile Hall budget to purchase a new commercial dishwasher for the Juvenile Hall as requested by the Chief Probation Officer.
Mr. Chairman, I just have a quick question on item number, well, the first, the $1,200 in the OES grant award. It's Humboldt Area Foundation and Wild Rivers Foundation are affiliated?
Mm-hmm.
But, so it doesn't matter that it says Wild Rivers on the budget transfer request on it? Okay, that's, that's great. That's, just wanted to make sure that was in order.
Any public comment on these budget transfers? Seeing no public comment, then we'll bring it back to the board for, oh, go ahead.
I have a question on $10,000 for a dishwasher in Juvenile Hall that's being closed. I'm just curious why we would buy a brand-new dishwasher for something that's being considered to be closed.
Yeah, understandable, okay. And I can respond to that in saying that the Juvenile Hall is not going to be closed completely. It would only be closed to detention, so, or suspension of detention. So, however, however that comes out. So, we still need to have a dishwasher. It was in a, it was in a previous budget that they needed. We still need to have it and that's why it's there. Looking for a motion?
Uh, the number 29, the $1,200 within the Office of Emergency Services. Is that tax money and is that for the workshop for lunch?
No, and yes.
That's, yes.
Yes, but it's...
It's not tax.
Foundation money.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'll move we approve budget transfer 10-03 through 10-08.
Yeah, there is.
Yes, there is, in item 31.
There's two of them in the one. Got a motion?
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second. Kylie, would you please poll a vote?
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Mastin?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes.
Okay, legislative and budget issues. Prove and authorize a standing working group consisting of county departments pursuant to Rule 18 of the Administration Manual in order to assign the task of developing county strategy for addressing homeless in Delmar County, including but not limited to homeless encampments, and to approve the appropriation in the amount of $50,000 from the Measure R budget to the Code Enforcement Division, subject to approval of a budget transfer.
Motion.
Okay, I have a motion.
Oh, I'll second this.
And I have a second. Any public comment?
Although I don't respect what you have done, I do respect you having to sit through these meetings all the time. This is exactly what's wrong with the Measure R and why we should not be spending more money, tax money, on bad policies. Why can't we encourage this property that we want to take off the tax rule and encourage a business to come in and employ people? Perhaps we could incentivize some industry in the community because our homeless problem is void of jobs in the community. And we're not going to be able to solve the homeless problem without viable jobs. And I think this is another form of government overreach. I think you should stay out of civilians' lives and let people live to the best of their ability. You can't solve everyone's problems. And you're making it harder on working families to have to support these policies. So, I ask you not to approve this.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Hi, I'm Daphne Cortez Lambert. I am the founder and director of Delmar Mission Possible. And I want to say, wow, you guys are, I have to commend you. This is a really tough job that you do. So, I'm looking at this and I have been working with the homeless in cleaning up encampments for the last two years. And we, through partnership with Solid Waste Management and the homeless population, we gather anywhere from one to five tons of garbage a week. The encampments are trying very... The encampments are trying very hard, but I am in total support of having a working group because I believe that there is so much power when we come together. And what I would love to see is a community being able to be a part of that group, not just the administrative. I'd love to share my expertise in working with that population and giving a voice to that population that we serve. I also believe that it's very important when we're talking about cleaning up those encampments, that we empower the people and use them. Because I had shared often the example of if you have a child cleanup, if you go and you chi- clean up a child's room, that child isn't going to respect that. But when they have some skin in the game and they're actually cleaning it up, that's what makes it powerful. That's what gives ownership. I believe that, as the gentleman said, this could be a really good job for them. If we could pay them for some of the work that they do to clean up, not to clean up their mess, but to clean up encampments that have already been, you know, some encampments, people just use them as dump sites. And I've seen that happen. It isn't always the homeless population, it's people just adding to it. So I'm looking at jobs, looking at everybody coming together. I also, when you come to the point of cleaning up encampments, I want to make sure, I think it's really important that we address where are these people going when we clean them up? Because I live right on Humboldt Road, and I can tell you that when you clean up Out Valley, they're going to go right across the street from me. And I've already seen it, and I've already thought, you know, hey, I could go in there and talk to them and tell them to move, but where am I going to tell them to move? Your backyard? I don't want to do that. So I think that this working group coming together and everybody meeting minds is going to be amazing. And so I just want to offer hope.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I just have a question for staff on the allocation of $50,000 out of Measure R. I just want to make sure that's an appropriate fit for why Measure R funds were allocated. This is specifically to code enforcement for cleanup? Can you kind of add some clarity to that for me? Or anybody who's sued?
No, under Measure R, the vital services for this community, code enforcement is one of those services. It's definitely allowable use. It's for cleanup of those properties.
It is for cleanup?
Yes.
That's what I wanted to specify.
The dumpsters, the staff, the equipment involved in cleaning up that property.
And there wasn't any room in this current budget to clean up those?
Not the size of a project, no.
Okay.
Joel, I ask for a little direction here. Can I appoint or should I appoint people to this committee now?
I, I would say leave the, the people on it a little vague. If you specify exactly who's on it, it becomes a Brown Act committee, generally speaking.
Oh, I got you. So we're just.
If you just create the ad hoc meeting.
Well, this is a working, a standing, this is a standing working group. That, to me, is a standing committee meeting, so that's not, I'm not, am I reading that wrong?
No, I don't know, I haven't actually looked at it that closely.
A standing committee would require.
If you create a standing committee, it's going to be a Brown Act body.
Well, that's what it looks like to me. So am I creating something other than?
I'm not sure if the intent was to create a Brown Act body or not. There is, you know, enforcement matters, potential litigation discussions, I would not create, I thought we were procuring an ad hoc committee.
Okay, well, okay, let's change, change that then to an ad hoc working group.
Just to kind of on that same line, it, it says, consisting of county departments. Can we change this to include Delmarque Mission Possible? I think.
Yes, yes.
Can we incorporate other stakeholders?
Yeah, you can say, yeah, keep it vague, I would say.
Yeah, okay.
Good.
So we'll make that county departments as well as other stakeholders and go with that.
Thank you.
Okay. And we had a motion and a second?
Do, do I need to adjust the motion or just based on the discussion?
Why don't you?
Okay, I wasn't really.
Yeah, I was just, I just added ad hoc working group to include stakeholders.
Thank you. Supervisor Maston, that's, was going to be my question. Thank you.
And the second?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And no further public comment? Okay, we'll bring it back to the board then. Kylie, please poll the vote.
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Maston?
Restounding yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Okay, are we good, Kylie?
No, we need to do the consent.
Consent.
Oh, gosh, that's right. We skipped right over that. We were running so far ahead of schedule, we skipped right over that.
Mr. Chairman, I would ask that we poll item number 16 for discussion possible, separate vote.
Okay. Item number 16, we will poll. And, uh, motion on the rest of the?
No, sir, moved.
There we go.
Okay, got a motion by Howard and a second by Short, excluding item number 16, which we will take up for discussion in a minute. Any public comment on the consent agenda, item minus, item number 16? Seeing no public comment then. Kylie, would you please poll the vote?
Supervisor Maston?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Okay, item number 16.
Thank you. Appreciate Renell still being here for this. The item is proven authorized, the chair to sign the attached agreement with Queer Humboldt to provide comprehensive database of resources for the LGBTQ community. And looking into this item, I looked at Queer Humboldt just to see what services they provide, and it was a bit alarming to me in, on their website and the About Us section. It, it makes them sound like they are a political activist group that doesn't really focus on providing services to that community. I mean, I could read it to you, I guess, Queer Humboldt Practices Intersexual, Intersectional Liberation, excuse me. We work to be allies and accomplices for all marginalized populations since when any of us are oppressed, we all suffer. Queer people exist in all community, thus queer liberation is inextricably intertwined with the Black Lives Matter movement. Just immigration policies and practices, native sovereignty, disability rights, feminism, body positivity in all movements that dismantle systems of oppression. And they, they speak to being anti-colonialist and giving 1% of their annual budget to the Weyot tribe for dismantling the settler colonial, colonialism through their work. It, it, it just seemed to me that they were a political activist group and not focused on offering services to the LGBTQ community. When I look at California LGBTQ, the Health and Human Services Network, they're, you know, about them is they advocate for policies advancing the health of LGBTQ communities, expand coverage to improve access to quality of care, strengthen programs and build capacity for member organizations, and increase funding to LGBTQ Health and Human Services organizations. I mean, that, that sounded to me like a much better organization to provide the services that, that we're talking about and not a political activist group. So I, I just kind of questioned whether we should contract with that kind of group or with a different organization that seemed to be more focused on providing services for that community.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
So we're only providing a database of resources. We're not providing anything else to the organization, correct?
Yeah. Yeah, that's my understanding as well. So this process was for our Mental Health Service Act plan that we do as a community stakeholder process, and Queer Humboldt presented a presentation or a proposal with that plan to do this database resource only.
I think the question is what qualifies them to, for that? I think Supervisor Short brings up a good point. Are they an advocacy group, a lobby? Or are they a group that actually is scientifically going to collect the data of the 1,500 people they say they're going to reach in Delmarque County? And what, what qualifications do they have to do it? And so he brings up a good point, and I'm curious about that.
Okay, yeah, I don't have that off the top of my head. I'd have to go back and review their proposal. But they have been active in our local behavioral health board meetings and really participating in that advocacy to reduce the mental health stigma for the LGBTQ community. And that is the precept of the Mental Health Service Act plan and funding is for that purpose.
Is there anybody else capable of doing the exact same thing to meet this need?
We did not receive any other like proposals, and they all are unique to provide a service within the different framework of the Mental Health Service Act funding, like innovation or prevention or those type of situations. So to my knowledge, this is the only proposal we received in that aspect. We don't specify what kind of proposal it needs to be for what particular program. Those community partners are, bring those forward to us about their ideas.
I guess that kind of brings my concern to a moot point, being as they're the only person that, or the only entity that responded to your request. So thank you very much.
Yes.
I guess we'll, I'll move to approve item 16.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any public comment? Seeing no public comment, then we'll bring it back to the board, discussion. Kylie, please poll the vote.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
No.
Supervisor Maston?
Yes.
Supervisor Short?
No.
Chair Hemmingson?
Wow. I'm, I'm going to say no and send this message out to Brandon Bieber that that's a consent agenda item that we did not approve.
Wow. Wow. Chair, can I just get clarification? Supervisor Short moved to approve the item, didn't he?
Yes, yes, indeed.
Doesn't take them from voting against it.
And you can make the motion and bow? I'm, I'm sorry, I wasn't sure about that.
Yeah, they're separate. You can do both.
Okay, I just never had that happen, so I wanted clarity. Thank you.
It finishes the item. Bring it up. Yeah.
Because this wasn't approved, we may need to bring the Mental Health Service Act plan back to the board because that particular program was included as an approved program.
Okay, and.
Yes.
And since, since I was a no vote, we can bring this back on. I just think we maybe need a little more information on, bring us back some more information. I'll put it back on the agenda if we can get some additional information, and maybe we won't have to do that. Just, just qualification, and if there's somebody else out there that would do this type of thing, I, I don't, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. That's it for this agenda.